Are you doing the testing for voice yet?
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to City Hall and to our council chambers. This morning, we are going to be led, or invocation will be led, or sent by Pastor Albert Walker with Mount Pisgah.
Start your prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time that as we gather here in this meeting on today, that you would bless our city leaders. You would bless the city council. Bless everyone that plays a role here in the city of Corpus Christi. I pray that you would just lead, guide, and direct them in the way that you would have them to go. Continue to keep this city safe from all hurt, harm, and danger. In Jesus's name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Thanks for being here. And the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States and to the Texas State Flag will be led by Matthew Bagala. He is a ninth grader in Cornet Word Academy. He's on the cross-country team and he plays the violin with the Corpus Christi Area Youth Orchestra.
No angels.
No angels.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in honoring the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance, I'm sorry, honor a Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Matthew. Ms. Huerta, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Paulette Juarezdo.
Present.
Council members Roland Barreira.
Here.
Sylvia Campos. Gil Hernandez. Michael Hunter. Jim Klein. Mike Pasly. Everett Roy. Everett Suck, I mean, Dan Suckley, sorry. City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City Attorney Mous Rizley. Mayor and Councilor Cora, the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Great, thank you, Ms. Huerta. We'll go on to Section E, which is our city manager's comments and update on city operations, Mr. Zanoni.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, good morning. We do have one item on the city manager's report this morning, and it's to highlight eight capital projects that we have across the city that are either nearing completion or there's strong progress being made. So we wanted to review those with you this morning. And of the eight projects, two are public safety related, three are road projects, and then two are parks related. When you total up the sum of all these, including design and construction, it's roughly about 100 million. So it's certainly not the entire list of all the work that we're doing out there. But it's a good representative sample of the work that we're doing across the city to make it a more enjoyable place to live and raise a family and work. And many of them are basic city services such as our public safety and roads. So the first one you can see on the screen here is our police training academy. And this was designed by local architect firm Turner Ramirez. Fulton CozCon is the contractor. And the total budget is 22.4 million. The start of the construction was in March of 2023. And Fulton has done a great job saying on schedule, the construction will be done in August of this year. And then furniture and fitting of the facility will have it ready for a November start. So construction will be complete, but we'll ceremoniously enter the building in November. So the police training academy is a vital project that will ensure the safety and security of our community. This is truly a state-of-the-art facility. That term is often used. I kept it in here just because it is a state-of-the-art facility that is poised to provide comprehensive advanced training for not only our law enforcement officers, but law enforcement officers from across the region. So expected to be completed, as I mentioned, in August and open in November. The academy will equip our police force, led by Chief Mike Markle, with the skills and knowledge needed to continue to effectively protect and serve our community. Investment in training is an investment in the future of Corpus Christi, fostering an even safer and stronger community for all. So with that, we want to show you some drone footage that's pretty impressive here of the facility just taken recently. We're going to show that now in the monitors. Now you can see the academy. Right behind it is the running track that the cadets will use. Quarter-mile loop around, chief, right? Ample parking. This facility sits right on the grounds of the Delmar Southside Campus. You can see it's coming together real nicely. You'll see it from the Yorktown Road. About 36,000 square feet. That replaces really, you know, almost a two-room building that was, I forget what it was initially, but it's so bad that the restroom facilities are literally porta-potties. So this is tremendous for the city. Okay, our next project we want to highlight is Fire Station Number Three, and this is on Morgan Avenue. And this will be one of the first replacements that this city has done in many decades. Replacement Fire Station replaces one of the busiest fire stations we have on Morgan Street and with a brand-new one that's more suited for not only our firefighters who live in the facilities when they're on duty, but the bays will be big enough to get the equipment in, which many of our fire stations don't fit that requirement. The trucks are bigger nowadays, and it's tough to get them into the stations. So this one is really a beautiful facility. It'll be a kind of a benchmark for the rest that we replace. We know that we have a goal to replace half of our 19 fire stations over the next 10 years, and this will be a trendsetter in that. The architect was Brown, Reynolds, and Watford. Contractor is Weaver and Jacobs. The total project cost is just under $11 million. Construction started in October, and I drove by it myself the other day. It's impressive to see. You can see it coming out of the ground. Construction will be done in March of 2025. This is a pivotal project aimed at enhancing the emergency response capabilities of our firefighters. We know that they not only fight fires, but they do a tremendous amount of work in life safety rescues for our community. This is another state-of-the-art facility, and it's designed to provide our firefighters with modern tools and resources they need to effectively protect and serve our residents. Fire Station Number Three is expected to be completed, as I said, in March. And we're going to show you some footage of it now as well. It's right there on the corner of Morgan. I'm not sure to that side street, but Morgan was recently redone by the city. And so this is a tremendous economic boost for that corridor, which will undoubtedly spur private sector development in some of the adjacent lots as well. It's not too far from Crosstown Expressway as well. You can see the old station up at the 11 o'clock hour. Okay? So those are two public safety. The next we want to highlight is three street projects. And so our first one is Alameda Street. And Alameda is a pretty, we're going to go, yeah, we go. Alameda is a pretty extensive stretch from Louisiana Avenue all the way to Texan Trail. There's a midpoint there at Chamberlain. So we're combining two bond program projects, 2018 and 2020. HDR designed the project, and Raytech Construction, one of our premier road contractors, has been working steadily to include on weekends. I've seen them myself out there several times on Saturdays and Sundays, which is highly unusual, working on this project. It's just under 17 million. The work began in August last year and expected to be complete next December. And Alameda spans, as I mentioned, Louisiana, the Chamberlain, and then from there to Texan Trail. It is another significant infrastructure project aimed at enhancing connectivity. The road has, as many of our council members know, has residential development. There's commercial businesses and schools along its vicinity. So it's an important corridor that the city is rebuilding. That does include all the utilities underneath, and then a brand-new road surface as well with improvements to sidewalks. And so we're going to show you a quick drone footage of it as well. You can see this is the part by Louisiana. This will continue all the way down to Texan Trail, a rebuilding of it. You can see the bay up there in the 12 o'clock position, the Bay of Corpus Christi. Okay, then our next project is, I think, is probably, Jeff Edmonds will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's the most significant road project that the city has undertaken in terms of budget size and complexity. This is the Everhart Road. This spans all the way from SPID to the end or Alameda. It completes the Everhart reconstruction. You may recall, a few years ago, we did Everhart from SPID further in the other direction. But this section here is a 30, almost a $32 million road project. It was designed by Fries and Nichols. And then another local contractor, JE Construction, was awarded the contract. And they have made tremendous progress, and they have gained so much trust from us in terms of being able to do a project like this. We know that they were a smaller company that has been growing over time. And these folks also have been working on Saturdays and Sundays to get the work done. And we know that nobody likes riding down roads that are under construction, but they give us more sympathy when we're working, right? There's nothing worse than seeing a road closed with a bunch of barrels and no contractors around. You don't find that here in Corpus Christi. Not only do you see them working, but you see them working on the weekend as well. And so construction started here in November of '23, and it's expected to be done next October. However, due to JE's thought process and focus on the project, they expedited the work, and they're actually using some of the completed lanes and doing work on both sides or both ends of the street stretch. So it should be done a few months sooner than initially planned. Everhart is a complete reconstruction of brand-new underground utilities. And this street is being done in concrete, and it will last for many, many years. It's important because this is one of the busiest commercial corridors in the city, and it leads to the even busier one, SPID. So we're going to show you some footage here of Everhart real quick. Now we go. You can see the new concrete on the right, and then you can see on the left. You can see how we did the lane split on that concrete. So we're able to put two lanes on it and begin the work on the other side. This is the end by SPID. Okay, now we're going to move a little further south to our south side. So Cimarron Boulevard is, as next slide will show. This isn't necessarily a bond-funded program project, but it's one to highlight. It is one of our rapid paving program projects funded by our annual operating budget. It is a massive stretch, over three miles of roadway that is being milled and overlaid. And this is done by Anderson Columbia, one of our premier street contract companies here in Corpus Christi. Just under $4 million. The limits are airline to Legacy Point. And this will be done by August. It began in May. And this is another one. Coincidentally, I happened to be biking by here on Saturday, and they were milling and overlaying the road. So we really want to thank all our contractors for going above and beyond and getting the work done. You can see the beautiful road surface here. We're going to show you some drone footage in a minute that'll show you it as well. This project will ensure the longevity and safety of Cimarron Boulevard. That has a decent foundation, but with the milling and overlaying of the top street, it's going to provide a great, smooth riding surface for many years to come. And we're going to show you some of the drone footage now that demonstrates that. Remember, it's 3.4 miles. And the equipment and the approach that Anderson Columbia has done has been exceptional to minimize any disruption in traffic, but nice, smooth surface. A lot, some, many people in the community have stopped me to say, keep paving. That Cimarron Project is a great example of progress we're making. Okay, now also on the south side, we're breaking 50-year records with this next project. And this is our Billwitt City Park Swimming Pool, or really Aquatic Center is what we've referred to it as. This will be the first brand-new aquatic center this city has built in 50 years. It was designed by Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and DLF Texas is the contractor who's building it. The total budget is just under $11 million. That includes the design work and the construction as well. It began last July, and it will be done in August of this year. The Billwitt Pool represents a significant investment in the recreational infrastructure for our community. Most notably, this is the first pool, as I mentioned, that the city has built in 50 years. And you'll see in a moment here with the drone footage, it's really two pool systems. We have a 7,500-square-foot leisure pool. And then that is accompanied by a lap pool that has 25-yard swimming lanes, is a total of 10 lanes. And in addition, the project includes a clubhouse, complete with male and female restrooms and locker rooms and space for the lifeguards to get out of the sun for a little bit. The project is expected to be completed this August, and the aquatic facility will provide residents with a premier location for leisure and fitness, enhancing the quality of life in our city. It's really one of the first. I mean, we have swimming pools, but you'll see here in a moment, the drone footage, that this is going to be something real special. There it is here. You can see the aquatic center, the building in the background. Family pool is to the right, and then the lap pool to the left. There's brand-new parking as well. Right there at Billwitt Park, right off Yorktown, right across from the Police Training Academy. Yep, great. Okay, and then we're going to move over here to North Beach. This one, we're pretty proud of as well. This is our North Beach restroom facility and park and parking. And we're going to show a slide in a moment. Beautiful view there to include the Gulf, excuse me, the Bay there at North Beach. This picture represents work that was designed by professionals who focus on context-sensitive development. And so you can see dolphins and sea creatures that little kids can climb on that wall. Around the 11 o'clock hour is a climbing wall representing a wave from the ocean. And this seating areas with barbecue pitch, shade. The restroom facility you'll see in a moment. This was designed, after we initially designed it, by a firm that we've used at North Beach. It was a completed design by a design-build firm, Spaglass. Total budget is $6 million. The construction started last July, and I must say, Spaglass has been working diligently. They've had the same project lead who's well-known on North Beach because they get out and talk to anybody that comes by. The same project lead, she's been on the project from the beginning. She's real proud of it. They can't wait to open it up. It is an essential project aimed at enhancing the convenience and accessibility on North Beach. The facility replaces, it's gone now, but there was a 1960s vintage restroom that was there that really, we all knew wasn't really safe or aesthetically pleasing. It wasn't safe because all the restrooms, you had to walk behind the building to get to them. So parents lost sight of their child if they were on the beach. This modern facility is designed to cater to the needs of beachgoers, providing clean and accessible restrooms as well as ample parking space. The ground, the whole development has been elevated to get it out of the flood zone. In fact, with Hurricane Burl, there was minimal impact to this piece of property, while others in the low-lying areas that weren't elevated did have flooding, but this one escaped a lot of that inundation. Here's a view of it here, the video. You can see the Gulf or the Bay, I'm sorry. There's the restroom facility. It's elevated to be out of the velocity zone. You can see the play structures for the kids, there's a parking lot. This basically reorients the whole bathroom system, takes it off the beach and brings it away. So your view when you're there is the waters and the beach. Beautiful facility. I think it's next Monday we'll be there for a ribbon cutting at 9 o'clock. Councilman Roy will be leading that. Okay, and then the final project, as yet one more park project. And we all were excited. Councilman Roy and Pasly were here for the ribbon cutting for this, and Adam's here today. But the West Guth Skate Park was a smaller bond program project, but still made a huge impact to our children across the community. And it's going to make an impact from children across the region who have come to use it. It was designed by Hafen Associates. The contractor was North Star Elite. Just under $2 million for all the drainage and site work and then building the facility. It's really a more modern skate park. We're used to the one at Cole Park. at Cole Park, which is that deep bowl system. And nowadays, cities build them like this, which kind of represents a plaza, or like a downtown street environment, with its railings and different levels of ground. It almost represents something you see on like a college campus or something, but the kids have loved it. And I just spoke with Adam earlier today. He goes up there every morning, and he says it’s extremely utilized by the community. So this one includes, in the park, other amenities were done as well, but here’s some footage of it now. You can see it there. There’s a nice shade structure to the right. Yep, there it is. Okay, so, Mayor and Council, that concludes this City Manager’s Report. Just a quick highlight of eight projects that will make a tremendous difference in the lives, not only our community, but I think a lot of visiting folks as well from the region or even from the state, who will benefit from some of the amenities that this council has approved and the voters have approved through bond programs, and our committed local contracting community is delivering. I mean, you don’t see it much across Texas where people are working Saturdays and Sundays, but our contractors are, and we appreciate that. So I’ll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Great, great. Thank you, Peter. And yes, we agree. Thank you for the update. That’s very informative. A lot of times, we lose track of what’s being done where and the progress. So this was very, very informative. Thank you. So we’re going to go ahead and proceed to item G or F, which is public comment. I’m just going to take a quick moment to emphasize the importance of this business meeting. We handle significant matters concerning taxpayer dollars, making it imperative that we uphold the highest standards of decorum and adherence to our policies. Our core principles of openness, of transparency, and inclusiveness guide our actions, and we aim to achieve them while respecting our city council policy, which has been in place for over 30 years. Public comment serves as one avenue for communication, but it’s certainly not the sole method. You can also reach out to any of your council members by way of phone calls, emails, or even an in-person appointment. With that said, let’s proceed to public comment, keeping in mind the importance of decorum and the adherence to this policy. Before we begin, I’d like to ask Mr. Risley, our city attorney, to review the rules of decorum. These rules will also be displayed on the television screens for your reference. Mr. Risley?
Be courteous, polite, and respectful of one another, including the city council and city staff. The mayor and council members shall be referred to by title and/or title surname. All remarks must be addressed to the mayor and city council, and not to the council members as individuals. Citizens are only permitted to speak on city-related subject matter. Speaking on any non-city-related matter is prohibited. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed. Citizens must refrain from any disturbing noise, demonstration, or other act disrupting to the city council business.
Thank you, Mr. Risley. So individuals will be called upon in the order they signed up electronically. We will first hear in-person comments, followed by virtual public comments. Residents of Corpus Christi will be given priority over non-residents. Please state your name and home address before beginning your comments. And if you, I’m sorry, you have two opportunities to make public comment on an agenda item or city-related business. The first is at this present time, and the second would be when we actually hear the item. If you’ll please select one option. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one minute, and a visible timer positioned near the city secretary’s desk will assist in managing that allotted time. Upon completion of the allocated time, a buzzer will signal the conclusion of your comments. And if you have a petition or any other relevant information, please present it to the city secretary before speaking, and she will hand it out to the rest, or to the council. So with that, we will start with Daniel Restly.
Hello, my name is Daniel Restly. I live at 2313 Louisville Drive, out on Flower Bluff. I would like to congratulate the council. I think you guys are doing a great job, and especially in support of our library board. I’m very happy with the way things are going. And I just wanted to show up and thank everybody very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Restly. John Weber?
John Weber, 6009 Naples Street. I request all IDA negotiations be done in the public part of the meeting. Saying that, I believe the fairest course of action is to annex all the IDAs. At a bare minimum, all the companies that appealed the council-approved water rates should be annexed, so they can’t appeal future rates. The appeal required the city to hire outside legal representation at considerable expense to taxpayers. Regarding the redlined version of the drought contingency plan, Section 10.4, Letter A should add exemptions for fruit and vegetable gardens, because this is people’s food source. Letter B prohibits washing vehicles or boats not occurring in the premises of commercial car wash stations. I challenge any commercial car wash to use less water than I do while washing my vehicle. This sentence should be redlined out of the plan for multiple reasons. Number one, it doesn’t reduce water use and might actually increase it if people sign up for unlimited commercial car washes. Number two, it would force body shops and other repair facilities to bring customer vehicles and boats to commercial car washes to clean them before delivering them to owners. Number three, it impacts the poor people greater than the wealthy as they have less disposable income. Number four, it takes local dollars out of circulation when they are deposited into California banks, as is the case with quick, quack car washes. Letter C used to prohibit filling or adding water or swimming pools, wading pools, and jacuzzi-type pools. It sounds like city employees receive pressure from wealthy people to remove this from the plan. If removed, it would allow wealthy people to use more water than people who can’t afford a pool. I do agree that all pools and spas should be covered. Other cities have ordinances requiring covers because it is the most effective method of reducing water loss through evaporation. Lastly, I recommend the council eliminate the drought surcharge exemption fee, or in fairness, offer it to all customer classes, including residential. This would be an excellent time to repeal Section 55-159 and give the required five-year notice to the participating large-volume industrial customers. I believe the city council voted on this the first time about over a year ago. It has changed significantly since then. I assume it will need two more readings. Let’s get a fair plan passed soon before we go into the next stage of drought. Thank you, and always have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Nami Fisher?
My name is Nami Fisher. I live at 4625 Cornet Drive in Corpus Christi, Texas, 78410. I’m here today to encourage vigilance and action if necessary by our elected officials in order to protect their constituents against fringe groups who would restrict our access to information through the removal of books in our public libraries. Our libraries are staffed with competent individuals, educated experts, who know how to build collections that promote growth and enjoyment for the communities they serve. In the name of individual freedom, parent choice, and the betterment of our city, they should be allowed to continue the development and selection practices that have been in place and have worked for decades. Americans are overwhelmingly against book banning. This isn’t typically a partisan issue. Both logical liberals, conservatives, independents alike do not want fringe groups dictating their rights. As responsible citizens and reasonable citizens, we should all understand that we have the right to choose what we read, and as parents and educators, we have the right to oversee what our children read. It is an overstep to allow small, special interest groups to dictate our library collections based on their worldview, which is inspired by extremist religious views. It is neither constitutional nor good for our community. I grew up in central Oklahoma. My grandmother was an esteemed and strict schoolteacher who I was very close to growing up. We went to church three times a week at the local Church of Christ. Our neighbor was the head librarian, and I spent hours reading books in the summer to try to earn the top spot at the reading challenges. I was a half-Japanese girl, raised by a single father in a time and in a city where this was not the norm. Reading books with diverse characters and atypical situations allowed me to know that there were others like me, and to learn about others who had different experiences than I. I mention this to say that even in my rural, religious upbringing, the people around me, including my peers and adults, understood the value of education, literature, and diversity. I now have three kids of my own. They go to school in Cal Allen. Every week, they hear racial slurs against minorities. They see classmates being bullied for being minority, special education, among other things. One of my children is a talented actress. She’s an award-winning writer and an honor student who is loved by her teachers. She also happens to be queer. I know she has had to deal with hate from classmates for this one part of her identity. And I worry about her and other children who are, quote, “different,” being targeted in both verbal and physical attacks. Now more than ever, given the rates of isolation, depression, and bullying our children face, we need to make sure that our government isn’t endorsing these fringe groups, whose voices only make the lives of our loved ones more difficult. Again, this should not be a partisan issue. Council, please listen to majority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Tom Taglibou?
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Taglibou. I live at 6025 Ocean. Mayor and council, my message to you today about the library board subcommittee and the collections development policy is simple. Please stop. Please stop the subcommittee from railroading this divisive agenda through. In the library board’s most recent annual report for 2023, not one of their goals involved the collections development policy, the removal of diversity, equity, and inclusion, or removing the authority from city library staff. So why are a small group being allowed to pursue unnecessary and unwanted changes that are not even a priority of their board? This is a tremendous waste of time, resources, and energy, which can be much better utilized. Please stop having non-public meetings about a substantial policy issue. I’ve served on several boards and commissions for the city, including the joint land use study for Naval Air Station Corpus Christi, and most recently, the Bayside Area Development Plan. Every one of these efforts involved years of public participation and engagement with affected community partners. Qualified, well-educated city staff are actively involved. This is not the case with the library board subcommittee. They are scheming behind closed doors with no professional guidance, and it needs to stop. Please stop vilifying, dehumanizing, and ostracizing the LGBTQIA+ community. This subcommittee is driven not by the interest of library patrons, but by a hate group who mischaracterizes the LGBTQIA+ community as sexual deviants, predators, and groomers. It’s an outrage, and it must stop. LGBTQIA+ individuals want to be competent professionals in their careers, sometimes raise a family, pay their taxes, live our lives peacefully without fear, contribute to the quality of life in our community, and enjoy the music, arts, culture, sports, and nature, just like heterosexuals do. We do want to go to our city libraries and read books, magazines, and newspapers, and enjoy the services offered there, just like every other patron. The collections development policy ensures that every demographic of the community has access to those resources without censorship, bias, or discrimination. Please stop this nonsense and disband the subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taglibou. Colby Wiltz?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. My name is Colby Wiltzey. I reside at 7929 Vishal Drive, Corpus Christi, Texas, 78414. I stand before you today as a concerned father of three young children, a regular patron of our public libraries. We take our kids there on a regular basis. I’m here to voice my strong support for our library board’s efforts to strengthen policies that help protect children from accessing inappropriate and potentially harmful materials. Our public libraries, as y’all know, are an incredible resource for our community. And as parents, we bring our children to these libraries, trusting that they will provide a safe and nurturing environment for learning and exploration. The library board’s recent initiatives to review and enhance their policies regarding children’s access to certain materials are not only commendable, but necessary. Children are impressionable. Their minds are like little sponges. They absorb everything you say, everything you do, everything they read. And so, introducing them to sexually explicit or age-inappropriate content at such a young age can have a profound and lasting consequence on their development, shaping their perceptions and behaviors in ways that may not become apparent until much later in life. I understand, and I take very seriously my responsibility as a dad, to provide, to protect, and raise my kids right. But I’m also a member of this community, and I believe it’s incumbent upon all of us to ensure that materials available to our children in public spaces are suitable for their age and their developmental stage in life. I want to emphasize that the library board members, I don’t think they’re book banners or censors. I believe they’re decent, thoughtful individuals appointed to serve our community, and they take this responsibility very seriously as well. Their goal is not to restrict information, but to create a family-friendly environment where parents can feel confident that their children are safe to explore and learn. And as a father, who frequently visits the libraries with his children, including my three-year-old, I would appreciate knowing that there are safeguards in place. It would give me peace of mind knowing that my child is not going to stumble upon something that’s going to influence them or be a detriment to them, and that they’re not ready to process or understand. So the library board’s efforts to review and strengthen these policies demonstrate their commitment to serving all members of our community, especially our most vulnerable, our children. They have a difficult job working to strike a balance between providing access to information and protecting our children’s innocence and well-being. I fully support the board’s initiatives, and I urge the city leadership to do the same. By backing these efforts, we’re not limiting freedom of information. Rather, we’re ensuring our public libraries remain safe, welcoming spaces for all families. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Wiltzey. Robert Kimes?
Hi, I’m Robert Kimes. I live at 706 Texas Avenue in District 2. I just wanted to come up here and say thank you all for listening to us. Thank you for listening to the community. It’s really important to have an outlet come to the elected officials and tell you what’s going on. And so, I really appreciate you all doing your jobs and spending the time to listen to all members of Corpus Christi. And so, it’s really especially important to listening to our underprivileged communities, including our LGBT community. So I really encourage you to continue to listen to all of us and to listen to what’s going on at the library board, because it continues to be a talking point in our area. So definitely dive in and take a look at what’s going on. We’d appreciate your support, and we’d appreciate y’all helping us out in this manner. So also, we’d really appreciate your support as we are gearing up for a time in America where it’s going to be a talking point about the LGBT community existing or not existing, with that being the election coming up in November. It would be great to have your support, being vocal and loud that, hey, we do recognize that there’s LGBT individuals in our city, and we protect them, and we love them, and they’re part of us as much as we are a part of the city as well. So I encourage you to participate in our LGBT community events coming up in October. I would really love to see your faces there in the parade and the block party, and just showing some support for our community. And so you can continue to support before then. You can dive into this policy issue in the libraries. You can come meet me at the Pride Center anytime. I’d be happy to introduce you to some clients of mine and talk to you a little bit more about how we’re supporting the community. And yeah, I’d love to talk to y’all individually as well about what we can do to make this a safer place in South Texas for our LGBT community, and what we can do to be allies of all individuals. So I really appreciate the work that you do. It’s really cool to see from our city manager the improvements that are coming to Corpus Christi. Makes me proud to live here, to see that we’re making our city as good as it can be for all residents. So I really appreciate y’all, and thank you for looking into this.
Thank you, Mr. Kimes. Maggie Peacock?
Maggie Peacock, 1773 Ennis Chassen Road. Recently, there was a study that ranked 500 major cities in the U.S. based on their quality of life. This study was determined with factors such as air and water quality, housing and infrastructure, affordability for community members, family and food security, and more. affordability for community members, family and food security, and more. Corpus Christi was on the list of the bottom 10 in the nation. We are 492 out of all 500 major U.S. cities in that study. And I can tell you why. Folks in leadership positions are bought out by the fossil fuel industry. Instead of investing in a clean environment and affordable housing and low-barrier shelters, amongst other things that directly impact community members, y'all are pushing for desalination. Y'all are raising the police budget. We always tell you to invest in us as community members, but y'all don't listen, and I hope y'all are ashamed by that national study. Along with investing in fossil fuel expansion and not community members and opportunities for young people, my partner, yes, I am queer for those people out there, I will be moving as they pursue their DEI. There are no opportunities in Corpus Christi as of right now for them, and that breaks my heart. But no, for all of the allies and people who think I'm a nuisance, AKA the ones bought out by the fossil fuel industry, I'm not going anywhere. There's so much to fight for here because we are ground zero when it comes to so many issues, whether that's climate justice or queer justice. Corpus Christi is my home because I found community members here that love and accept me for who I am as queer. And those are the same community members who are bearing the brunt of your decisions, and that's why I fight. So here's what I'm asking y'all: Stop prioritizing the health, safety, and opportunity for the public, not corporate greed. So in sum, invest in low-barrier shelters, annex industry, and make them pay their fair share. Stop making sneaky deals and cut the executive sessions where community members cannot directly engage, for those who are directly impacted, excuse me. Listen to Hillcrest community members and stop destroying their neighborhood. Yes, it is a neighborhood, unlike what many of y'all have said, and it is a beautiful one at that. Invest in a resiliency committee. We saw what happened in North Beach during Tropical Storm Alberto. It was horrible. Eliminate current inequitable drought contingency plans. Stop desalination because it's already bringing in new industry, which data through statistics and stories of community members tells us needs to immediately halt to save our Corpus Christi community and our rapidly warming planet. Do not eliminate DEI books. As a queer kid, I wish I had that representation. We will keep fighting, so just remember that. And community members y'all don't listen to or represent will win when it comes to having a clean environment, affordable housing, and initiatives to protect queer kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peacock. Victoria Holland. Is Victoria Holland here? Okay. Adair Apple? Adair Apple?
Hi. Excuse me. My name's Adair Apple. My address is 7809 Levine, here in Corpus Christi, Texas. I'm in District 5.
Oh, my.
Yes. I'd like to address our public libraries. I have two children. They're wonderful people. I'm very proud of them. They're also part of the LGBTQ community. I'm sorry. When they were growing up, I took them for weekly trips to the library. I wanted to expose them to a variety of literature that was beyond the collection we had at home. I wanted them to grow up with a love of learning. My children are still avid readers. Books took them to other worlds and taught them empathy. They learned that everyone is different. They learned that everyone has value. We taught them to treat everyone with kindness and to realize that our differences are what make us unique and special. The individuals who have challenged library books maintain that they only want to eliminate inappropriate material, but we know they want to eliminate anything that reflects the LGBTQ community. How do we know? Because on July 19th, the Caller Times published an article with details of the recent Corpus Christi library book challenges. They obtained the book challenges from an open records request. All of the book challenges target books with LGBTQ+ material. They use hateful language like "gender confusion." Those two words reek of ignorance and hate. They write that it is not the role of the public library to use taxpayer dollars to push an extreme ideology such as queer ideology on children and the public in general. Being queer is not an ideology, nor is it extreme. Extreme is trying to remove the stories that reflect the LGBTQ+ community from the library and, as they quote, "the public in general." The request also mentions that LGBTQ books should not be in the library, especially as there are no other materials in the library that show problems with such a lifestyle. That is such a hateful thing to put in writing. I wonder if they realize that including homophobic books in the library collection would essentially be condoning hate speech. I keep thinking about my own children. They were once LGBTQ kids. They were once LGBTQ young adults. Stories that reflect their lives should be in the library. Resources that chronicle the lived experience of LGBTQ people should remain freely available in our library. I resent the implication that books that reflect my children's lives are somehow inappropriate. These attacks on the LGBTQ community are misplaced. If you allow the library Subcommittee to censor our public library, what story are you telling? Because I assure you, our LGBTQ youth are listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Apple. Linda Jabo.
Linda Jabo, 410 Southern Street. Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop of Ohio State University coined a phrase: "windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors." Regarding books, these windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors give children and adults a chance to see themselves represented in literature, or maybe just the opportunity to learn or to understand a little bit more about a family member, a friend, and, yeah, maybe themselves. Banning or making books inaccessible because you don't agree with a lifestyle isn't fair to anyone. It isn't protecting anyone. It's discrimination. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Jabo. Autumn Jaeger.
Good afternoon. My name's Autumn Jaeger. I live at 1035 Woolshire Place in District 2. I just wanted to speak today about my support for our librarians and their continued support of all of our community members. They know how important it is to have a library that supports diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. DEI is not the devil, as some might have you believe. DEI is how our public services, such as our library, can properly reflect all members of our wonderful community. I fully support our librarians. They are well-trained and highly educated and able to make decisions on how to best serve our community. I do not support, nor do I think it is necessary, to strip away any DEI measures, nor do I support the Secondary Library Subcommittee, whose purpose only seems to be to ban books and take away from our community. I have seen these effects of these measures in our public schools. The harassment of my wonderful school librarian has endured. The shame cast upon certain students for being just who they are. Allowing extreme fringe groups to police what is or is not available in our library based upon their own personal beliefs would be a failure to our community. Just as I see a wonderful array of diverse people in this room, people of different races, genders, religions, sexual orientations, so should this be reflected in our libraries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jaeger. Carl Badlach.
On the item? Okay. Pete Prescott.
My name's Pete Prescott, and I live at 4202 Cost Stores. This is the last place I'd ever think that I'd find myself. But I want to share my heart with you. Thank you for allowing me to have a few minutes to share my heart. I have not come here to condemn but to shed light in this present darkness. We were all brought up knowing and acknowledging the Ten Commandments, and I want to thank every one of y'all for the pledge, the pledge at the first, that this country belongs to God. It was created by God, and we must stand on God. Jesus summed up in these two parts of the Ten Commandments, "Love your God with all your heart, mind, and soul, and love your neighbors yourself." This is why I'm here, to love and share truth. We either believe or we do not believe that the Word of God is true or not. We cannot pick and choose only the good from it, but we must also choose to believe the truths that lie between its covers. According to Romans 1, we were all created knowing right from wrong, and indeed, we were. We live in a fallen world, and it causes doubt when it comes to the truth. Yes, look around. God created us male and female. The evidence is clear. From the very beginning, He tells us that we are to go forth and multiply, multiply good, not just in sex, but multiply good. If our parents had not multiplied, then not one of us in this room would be sitting here today. God's Word is true. This issue that we're talking about today is challenging each one of us to do what is right. If we claim to love God and love Jesus, then we are obligated to share the truth and lead others to the good, not the evil. Instead of criticizing those who have succumbed to the darkness, we must start loving them by sharing the truth with them as we live out the truth daily in our own lives. Jesus tells us in Matthew 18:6, "If anyone causes one of these little ones to stumble, those who believe in Me, it would be better off for them to have a large millstone wrapped around their neck and thrown into the sea." The prophet Ezekiel, speaking on God's behalf, shared in Ezekiel 3 and 33, "When I say to a wicked person, you will surely die, and you do not warn them or speak out to dissuade them from their evil ways in order to save their life, that person will die for their sin, and I will hold you accountable for their blood. But if you do warn that wicked person, and they do turn from their wicked ways, they will die for their sin, but you have saved your life." Today, we come out of love, not hate. We love our God, and we love our neighbors. We love our families, and we love our communities. We love our country, and we must love our children by protecting them and not allowing them to be deceived by the darkness. He created us male and female. He does not make mistakes. Let us love and speak truth, not condoning evil or tolerating evil, but out of love, making us stand for the truth by opposing the darkness. The Word of God is the truth. Jesus is the truth, and He came to set the captives free from evil and lead us into His marvelous light. Let us love. Let us choose the good over evil. Let us do what we know we must do so that our children and their children will believe that there is only one true God, the God who created each one of us for His good, and that our God does not make mistakes. That's true love.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Paul Lozek.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Lozek, and I reside at 657 Sorrel. I speak to an ongoing difference of opinion about what young children should be exposed to in our public libraries. The opinions I express are my own. My concern today is the education of our children and their future. Common sense dictates that young, innocent children should not be given access to books or videos that contain graphic, explicit, sexual contact, and that are purposely written to coax or convince them to partake in any type of sexual activity. Is it not our responsibility to protect children? Are we not to shield them while they are still vulnerable? They will be exposed to reality soon enough. I support those members of our Library Board who stand against graphic sexual material of any kind in areas of the library that cater to children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lozek. Adam Rios. Adam Rios? Oh, there he is.
Good afternoon, counsel, secretary, city management. Wanted, first off, congratulate our city's Parks and Recreation Department.
Let's state your name and address.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Almost forgot. Adam Rios, 7301 Tangled Ridge Court. Just wanted to congratulate our Parks and Rec on the proclamation, celebrating National Parks and Recreation Month. I'm looking forward to the future of safe spaces for all the children in this community, especially, you know, not just the current future, but some of us old cats that still skate around these skate parks that are being built, and future athletes. Especially looking forward to the creation of an alternative sports department. I'm just kidding. I just, it's an election year. I'm trying to throw some things out there, get y'all interested a little bit. But I thought I'd give that my best shot. Westview Skate Park, I'm there every morning at 7:00, 7:30. I actually adopted that park, so I try and go there every morning to make sure that it's clean, and so far, there's really not much to pick up, the occasional water bottle. But I ran into a good friend of mine, Josh, who is the founder of Make Shift Skateboard Company. And for those of you who don't know, he's actually bringing a huge event here to Corpus Christi in November with the company Vans. They're going to be donating 200 complete skateboards to kids in the area. And we did start to talk about the idea of creating skate camps for kids and young adults in our community. We seem to have athletic programs for every sport except for skateboarding. We do have the facilities now with multiple parks, again, thanks to the community efforts. And you just happen to know responsible adults, like me and others, who would be willing to teach these classes and kind of help promote and advance the great sport of skateboarding, especially the safety aspects of it. There's no better place to progress at your chosen pace than that of a public or community space or recreation center, especially if you're just getting involved in sports. And as I have reminded everyone as much as I possibly can, skateboarding is the third most commonly reported interest for high school students especially. And just to give you a recent statistic, 27% of young adults from junior high to high school expressed interest in having a summer skate camp, and 29% of girls. So there is a huge eye on skateboarding right now. Skate camp is an ideal place for individuals and groups to challenge themselves, to encourage others as well as be encouraged, to set and achieve goals while learning to manage risk along the way. I've always promoted accessibility and safe places, and I think that could be the mission of skate camps. And imagine if all these lessons blossomed into our community, and we all worked together the way we do with these skate parks, how much further we'd probably get. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. Jasmeen Evans.
Hi, I'm Jasmeen Evans. I live at 3310 Rodfield Road. I am just here wanting to show support for my community, especially being a proud community member here in Corpus Christi. I have come to learn that this is a beautiful community, and it's a shame that a lot of the people here that have welcomed me with open arms don't feel as welcomed here in the community as they should. And so I just want to show my solidarity with them, especially in the context of the Library Subcommittee. I do trust our library members, but also I do wish that they would make decisions that would reflect the wishes of the community and not take away literature that would better our community. So that is all I wish I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Eli McKay.
Good afternoon, council mayor. My name is Eli McKay, and like all of you, I live on the land of the Karanka'aw and Lipon Apache Peoples at what is now 1008 Marguerite Street in District 1. So I'm here today to stand in solidarity with the folks who have spoken concerning the established Library Subcommittee. The Subcommittee was established to review the Collection Development Policy. The Library Board, I believe the Library Board should focus on something else, as this policy was reviewed in August of 2023 and is scheduled to be reviewed again in August of 2025. So we have to ask ourselves, why was the Subcommittee established? Over the last year, we've seen many things become politicized.
Hi, I'm Jasmine Evans. I live at 3310 Rodfield Road. I am just here wanting to show support for my community, especially being a proud community member here in Corpus Christi. I have come to learn that this is a beautiful community, and it's a shame that a lot of the people here that have welcomed me with open arms don't feel as welcomed here in the community as they should. And so I just want to show my solidarity with them, especially in the context of the library subcommittee. I do trust our library members, but also I do wish that they would make decisions that would reflect the wishes of the community and not take away literature that would better our community. So that is all I wish I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Eli McKay?
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. My name is Eli McKay, and like all of you, I live on the land of the Karanka'ua and Lipanapachi peoples, what is now 1008 Marguerite Street in District 1. So I'm here today to stand in solidarity with the folks who have spoken concerning the established library subcommittee. The subcommittee was established to review the collection development policy. The library board, I believe the library board should focus on something else as this policy was reviewed in August of 2023 and is scheduled to be reviewed again in August of 2025. So we have to ask ourselves, why was the subcommittee established? Over the last year, we've seen many things become politicized without need. This is definitely one of them. And as council members, you're elected to look beyond this tactic and to do what's best for our city's progress. We all rely on you to make the right decisions. I have personally attended all but one library board meeting this year. I missed one because I was at another city meeting. I urge any city council member or member of the public who knows our library board members to use your influence and ask them to refocus their attention on growing programs and uplifting fantastic work that's being done at all of our public libraries. Your advocacy can definitely make a difference. So like I said, I have attended all but one of the library board meetings. Our library system has, the board's support for the library system has been minimal due to the theatrics. Thank goodness that we have well-qualified city librarians. They keep going regardless and offer fun, educational, free events to the community, such as arts and crafts, storytime, game days, movie days, and a whole lot more. So I believe that at this time it would be appropriate to disband the subcommittee and reestablish a committee when it's closer to the August 2025 deadline for the review. Y'all may remember that I have come before you multiple times and stated that anyone who holds a position of power and stokes division is failing the people that they represent. So please keep that in mind and discern how your decisions impact all of your constituents, not a select few. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Laramie Fain?
I didn't even prepare a comment. What are we doing? You got two schools of thought. You got the people that are saying like, hey, this is important.
Sir, can you set your name and address?
Sorry, yes. Laramie Fain, 322 Texas Avenue, Corpus Christi, Texas, District 2.
Thank you.
I'm just really tired of hearing, like, disgustingly hateful things being set up here. No harm's being done. I've been keeping track of those against the removal. Right now, we are at 31, and those four is six. I don't know. I don't really have much else to say. having to hear the things that are being said about human beings, my friends, people I don't know. It's horrible to hear the religion that I practice being invoked to incite hate, being twisted to incite hate. Yeah, it's just bad. I'm not as eloquent this week. I just am kind of over it. I'm sure y'all are overhearing about it, too. So do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fain. And that concludes our in-person public comment. Ms. Whitza, do we have a web?
Yes, ma'am. I understand Catherine Barnes will be speaking on the phone. Ms. Barnes, are you still online?
Hi.
All right, Ms. Barnes?
There we go. I think they've unmuted me. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you.
Yes. You can hear me now. First, perfect. Catherine Barnes, 520 South Chaparral Street, Corpus Christi, Texas. So Madam Mayor and City Councilman, thank you so much for taking this time to hear us out. I strongly support the library board and the work that they're currently doing there. I'd like to address some falsities that have been set against them. First of all, there's been a rumor going around based on, there's a PDF going around that says that five of the newest board members are actively part of Moms for Liberty and Citizens Defending Freedom. That is an outright lie. They also state that members have made it their priority to rally mistrust in libraries' current policies and to use scarce tactics to persuade city council to rid the library of DEI books and policies. That's a lie. I would really greatly appreciate that they would state what specific books that are DEI that are being removed. They've also stated that they have the support of the city council members in Gil Hernandez, Mike Pusley, and Michael Hunter. That is true, that they do support age-inappropriate material being removed from the minor children's section. Frankly, I believe that all of city councils should be in that place to be able to protect our children. They've also stated that over the past year that members have tried to change library policies with no success, and city officials and lawyers had to remind them that they are strictly an advisory board and do not have the power to make changes. Again, another lie. Another statement that has been made is, however, they found a loophole within the subcommittee that formed last meeting. The subcommittee can meet privately to evaluate the library's policies and report directly to the city council to request changes. It's not a loophole. They did not want to take up regular library board time in the regular meetings, so they created a subcommittee. The next thing that they've said is, we have evidence that the subcommittee is trying to erase all books dealing with diversity, equity, and inclusion and change any policies that protect diversity, equity, inclusion. That's a lie. Prove it. Show the evidence. There's another thing that says they will remove books from the shelves, take discussion topics like race, gender, sexual orientation, inequity, disability, and more. That's a lie also. So they've asked, what should you do? Stop listening to the lies. Attend the library board meetings, read the minutes, and do your own research. And before you come and say something that you've heard someone else say, make sure you check the resources and ask yourself, how do I know? How do they know? And are they actually a credible source? So I just want to thank each and every one of you. I know this isn't easy, this back and forth, but I just ask that you all really take a look at the information that's being provided, and you do the same thing. Attend the library board, read the minutes, and do your research so that you know what the actual truth is and what the lies are. Thank you so much for your time. I greatly appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, that's the last public commenter.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Whitza. Councilman, did you have a statement?
Yeah, I wanted to ask the city manager and mayor just a factual statement or request. Is it possible that the library director could come and speak to the council in the future? I think these issues are important, but I think at the same time, I'd like to hear from the library director and her perspective.
Yes, sir, and the library board in particular, and the subcommittee?
Whatever she feels is appropriate.
If the mayor's okay, we can put that on the agenda.
I am. And I think there's, you know, we're clearly hearing two different sides and two, on the same issue, different perspectives, maybe not just two. But I actually put in a call because I wanted clarity, and I think we all do need that clarity on exactly. I think the state also has something to do with the way libraries, to some degree, right, are run.
No, that's correct.
So we just need the whole, if she can come in and give us a briefing on it.
Yeah, we can do that, either next week or the next council meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Roy.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hernandez?
Yeah, Mayor, the library board, oh, I'm sorry. The librarian is going to be coming to council on the workshop to discuss her budget. Maybe we can include this part of that workshop.
Probably better.
Those, yeah, I would bring it in as a council meeting just to accommodate time because, yeah, that day is pretty, there's numerous departments that same day that we have planned.
I think a council meeting is probably more adequate.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment, and that takes us to item G, which is our consent agenda. That's items 2 through 17. Do any council members have any items they'd like to pull? We do have item number 11 pulled. But are there any others? Okay. I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve consent agenda. I'm sorry, Councilman Barada will be recusing?
Yeah, from item 11.
From item number 11. And you're right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of item number 11. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Please submit your vote. Rebecca, the motion carries. Rebecca, did we have a comment on item 11? Okay. Where is, oh, there you are. Ms. Telch, I'm sorry. She has a public comment. I'm going to open public comment on item number 11. So if anyone else would like to make any comment on item number 11, which is an ordinance adopting the city fiscal year 2025 and U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development program year, please come forward. Ms. Telch.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is Judy Telch, 4553 Santa Fe Street, Corpus Christi, 78411. I'm president of the Board of Directors of 1602 South Staples Street, the owner board of a HUD Section 811 subsidized apartment complex of five affordable and accessible units for five extremely and very low incomes of disabilities in Corpus Christi. I'm providing public comment on item 11 on the consent agenda relative to recommendations by city staff for funding under the FY Annual Action Plan, specifically to the proposed HUD home funding in the matrix which has been provided to you. Under the city's process of applying for HUD funds this year, South Staples Housing Incorporated submitted an application for home funds in the amount of $111,132 to renovate or rehabilitate, an application for home funds. And that renovation would be for the existing manager's unit to add, instead of that manager's unit, which hasn't been used for several years, to add a two-bedroom shared unit to that development. This amount is possible. This small amount is possible because the development is existing and has all the necessary infrastructure. Prior to submittal, I met with city community development staff who were encouraging and agreed with the need to increase the number of rental units for individuals at this lowest income level, many of whom are individuals with disabilities coming out of homelessness or institutionalization. Two of the current tenants are former homeless individuals. Unfortunately, city staff is not recommending funding the South Staples Street project. I respectfully ask that you further review this recommendation, including why is staff putting forth a recommendation to you under that same category of HUD funds to fund TG110 Inc., $587,531, when that project request to the city was for less than that? It was for $476,913 in-home funds. That's $110,618 less than what staff is proposing that they receive. Put another way, city staff is recommending more, adding more to their request, even though they didn't ask for it. In addition, the TG110 project will depend on being awarded 9% LIHTC funding. I submit that a highly successful organization may have other resources. I ask that you review, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Telch. Jennifer?
Jennifer Buxton, Assistant Director, Planning and Community Development. Yes, ma'am.
Well, if you could just address.
Sure.
If you could address, yeah.
Yep, the project that Ms. Telch is discussing, when they take a manager unit and turn it into a two-bedroom, when we discussed this with the organization, it would be two unrelated parties that would rent a bedroom. That is a roommate position, not a household situation, so it doesn't qualify for home funds. They would have to be what would be considered a single-room occupancy, which means there'd have to be like kitchenettes associated with each unit. Under the home program, you can't necessarily do shared a roommate situation. Now, you could do a two-bedroom unit if that two-bedroom were occupied by a singular household. But the way it was presented to us, it would be as if you and I were roommates in a unit and not a household. So there'd be two leases with roommates, not a household. Does that make sense? Yeah, and that's not eligible under the home program. It's a good facility, and it serves a need.
Right.
But it's not eligible here.
Councilman Hunter?
Is it a recusal or an abstention?
We said recusal.
For Councilman Barrera?
He's recusing himself from the vote, and then his vote will be recorded as an abstention. So he's not part of the discussion right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hernandez?
Did you relay that information to them at the time when they came to talk to you?
We did. We talked about whether or not they could go for what's called HUD 202 or 811, whichever is appropriate for persons with disabilities. We also talked about going after maybe even Type B, but we did talk about the roommate SRO situation with them for home funds.
So you didn't ask them to change their application so it could be a single household? Or is that even an option for them?
They're allowed to apply for, we had already discussed with them the ineligibility for home funds. They submitted that application. I don't, we're not, they're allowed to do that.
They're allowed not to get advice to change their application?
We provided advice saying it wasn't appropriate for home funds. They still applied for those funds.
Seems like it would have been ideal to ask them to change it so it could be a single household instead of two, to where you can provide funding. Is that not?
We met with them and told them it wasn't appropriate for home funds. They still submitted that home fund application. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what you're looking for.
So you're saying, so Ms. Telch came up and said that you explained that to her, and she would agree with that? Or, I mean, it seems like?
Based on public, based on her comment today, I would say that she disagrees with our decision. However, it doesn't, still doesn't make it eligible.
Okay.
Again, that's not my question, but did you recommend that she change the application?
No. The application was submitted for home funds. It is ineligible. That happened subsequent to.
So you didn't make that recognition?
We told her before she applied that it was probably ineligible for home funds. They decided to apply for home funds anyway. That anybody can apply for anything they want to apply for. But she was advised in advance that it was probably not suitable for home funds because of the occupancy standards.
Okay. Councilman Colling?
Thank you. Thanks, Jennifer. Has the South Staples project, has it received home funds before in the past?
They may have received home funds way back, but we don't currently have an active grant or loan, I don't believe.
You don't have any, I guess, details or information, I guess, about that previous application?
I don't.
Okay. I just want to be clear, I guess, about this. The decision to, that they are ineligible for the home funds, that is based, that decision came out of your office based on information, what, coming from the federal government?
Based on federal rules and regulations. It's not something that we can waive, and it was not an administrative decision. It's based on HUD rules and regulations.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Campos. Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification. Okay, so when an applicant applies, and, you know, it stated, like you say, federal government regulations, that the, what they're applying for is not going to be approved because it's not following the federal regulations. At that point, you say, well, you can apply again, but, you know, of course, we know the outcome will still be no. At what point do you suggest, do you say, listen, you know, it's not going to qualify under this, if you apply, if you set the application this way, but if you state, or if you change, that it would be for one, you know, one tenant, in this case, and one tenant instead of the possible two apartments, would you have been in that position to have advised that?
We provided that advice prior to the application. And then I believe the conversation with the program manager was had with each applicant, whether or not they would be awarded funds or not awarded funds. And of course, they're welcome to further discuss that at that point or at any point during the 30-day public comment period that these awards are out for. But, and we're always happy to discuss, okay, how can I make this more competitive next year? What can we do? Yes, I mean, that's, we have those conversations with people all the time. I shouldn't say all the time, but regularly.
Yeah, well, you know, we're all trying to figure out a way to have more housing, especially this type of housing, which is for the most needed, you know, the most. And I'm trying to figure out how we can, you know, be a little bit more advisable, a little bit more flexible, a little bit more informative. I don't know what, how to phrase this, but to say a little bit more helpful, you know? If there was a way, because I believe Ms. Telch would not have. I don't, I mean, she's here right now. She can say whatever she wants. But would have continued that application had she been advised that, no, if you continue according to the federal government, you're still not going to qualify, you know, for the loan if you set it this way. But you're stating that.
We had a meeting prior to the application. And then there's also a technical assistance workshop that's available to everyone applying for all of the funding sources prior to the application deadline that everyone is encouraged to attend. There are multiple opportunities for people to receive. And again, before the application process was underway, we met with the group, with the organization, and advised of the challenges with the home program and that it wasn't going to be eligible under home. But then there were other sources. I don't know why that advice was not heated. But the conversation was, the conversation was had.
Rebecca, request timer.
Okay, we're done. No, I'm just saying, I have no.
Everyone keeps putting their lights on.
Let's establish something. I mean, I don't like that, you know, one person is being requested to be timed and not everybody else. So, and one person can request that and not anyone else. So Rebecca, let's, I thought we had established that, well, you take time just so that it doesn't. I don't think, Ms. Campos, you were not.
No, I wasn't.
You have plenty of time left? But I just, let's establish that, Rebecca. Would you do that?
Thank you, Mayor. Because that seems to be like an ongoing pattern here, that it's usually done when I'm speaking, that councilman says, what is a time? And just, thank you, Mayor.
You've got the time. You've got the clock, I mean. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Councilman Hernan, I'm sorry. No, Councilman Hernandez, and then you.
Okay, real quick, this is a question for our attorney, Miles. You know, I think there was some back and forth on this application. Can we modify this to give them that funding associated with it with the caveat that there has to be a single-family home? Or is it, or is it that not a possibility based on the application?
When we're spending federal money, we have to follow federal guidelines. We need to follow them pretty strictly. Because if we don't, they can take back our money. They can come in, they can audit us, they can take back the money after we've gotten it and spent the money so that we ended up, end up with losing the money just out of our general fund. So you can end up with very bad results if you don't spend federal grants in accordance with state guidelines.
Okay, so I understand that. But I guess with the question I'm asking, is it, it's eligible if it's done the right way? But is it based on the application? Or can we, or can we modify it with the understanding that it has to be used in accordance with the federal regulation?
It sounds like it's simply ineligible, period. And we don't want to get into a situation where we're coaching people into making misstatements about their application. We want them to tell the truth about what they're applying for because we don't later want to end up losing the funds. We have to spend the money strictly in accordance with state guidelines.
Okay, because the concern I have is that, you know, there's an inordinate amount of benefit given to TG110, which is a subsidiary of Prospera, that I think, you know, is borderline, dare I say, malfeasance. And it bothers me that we have this, you know, thumb on the scale for this organization by our city staff. And so it makes it a little difficult to prove it. That's why I voted against this in the last, when we voted in the first time. So I will, if we can't do that, I'll just, I'll just vote against it. Thank you.
Councilman Roy.
Well, Miles beat me to the punch there. First of all, I think it is a danger. When we take a look at the facility itself, and I think if I hear and I understand what has been said is that the facility, what is there is conducive. It's built for two people to share. The only difference is, is that those two people are not part of, they're not family members.
They're not household members.
Household members, okay. Family members, household members, yeah, that definition there. So I think there is a danger if we sit there and say, okay, we're trying to coach somebody to get around the rule by doing this, this, and this, when the actual facility itself is built and conducive a certain way. And I think there is a little bit of a fear there. But the other thing is, and I just want to make comment to Councilmember Hernandez's comment on Prospera. You know, I used to chair the board of Prospera when I came off of council before. So I'm, I'm pretty, you know, I know what they've done. I've been part, I've toured their facilities and that. And if somebody's willing to go and follow the rules and put things in place to follow the rules, and they get awarded because of the fact that they follow the rules and they meet the federal guidelines and the standards, I don't know if we can sit there. I think it's a stretch to say that that organization is somehow has an upper hand on the city. So I think we need to be careful with that. So for that, you know, I'm going to support this. I'd like to make a motion to approve it and go on with this. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hunter.
Councilmember Campos, I apologize if it does seem that way. It has nothing to do with that other than your wonderful discussions discussed up here seems to bring out a lot of thought in other council members. And when it lines up on our list is why I'm requesting it. So from now on, I will request the timer when it is my turn to speak.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? To pass item number 11 is presented. We have a second. Please submit your vote. Oh, you know what, Rebecca? I think there were, it's Rowland's. He has to submit, I guess, or not.
Councilmember Klein, were you going to vote?
Okay, he doesn't then. Okay, great.
And for the record, Mr. Badet is abstaining. So it'd be two abstentions, yes, ma'am.
Okay. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Buxton. Okay, that takes us to Section K Public Hearings, items 18 and 19. This is zoning case number ZN 8120, an ordinance rezoning a property at or near 7213 State Highway 361. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Going to go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number 18? Actually, I think, right, Mr. Barilich, yeah. Is he, yeah, come on in.
I'm Carl Badelich, and I reside at 102 West Palm Beach. And, okay. This has come up before. A couple of years ago, and I had people sign a petition in Corpus to whether they wanted this or not, a trailer park on the beach. And overwhelmingly, nobody wanted it. I think there were two people, and I, y'all have those signatures. I've been there for 40 years. And when we were annexing the island with Lloyd Neal and, I don't know, Mr. Pusley, if you were there or not.
I wasn't guilty of that.
Okay. Well, what happened was, yeah, what happened was, we were annexing about four miles in the water district. And it was approved. Port Aransas was against it, but it was approved, and we didn't get the water district. And what's happened is, I finally got the, I used well water, and I finally got the water district to approve me for water district water. And when that happened, I was able to go ahead and plat the property to go ahead and move forward with my development. Well, I think we put in 1,200 feet of sewer line. And as soon as we did, we'd had some people come in to put a trailer park in south of me. And now another trailer park is going to go in north of me. And what that does is, is it lowers the value of the property all around. And it really causes a lot of problems with hurricanes. And I'd like to say that what I would like is, and it probably won't happen, is put it up to a vote to see if we can get the rest of this property annexed into Corpus for the water district. Because right now, the water district will not. If a sewer line gets put in, nobody can share the value of it. The person who gets it in has to cover the whole cost of it. And that's been a problem. I know somebody that wanted to put a park on the bayside, but they had to put a lift station. It was like 300, 400,000. And they had to do it themselves. But if we are in Corpus Christi with the water district, what happens is, everybody gets to share who taps on to it. And right now, what's happening is, people are coming in, and the trailer park idea is just a cash cow. You know, they don't contribute enough to the value of the taxes. And I guess that's, that's good enough. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Badelich. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment on item number 18? Okay, we'll close public comment. I believe we have a motion and a second on the table. Please submit your vote. I don't know where. What do we have here?
Britt stepped out.
And Councilman Hunter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
No, I mean, he, we can, the vote can still stand. We'll just kind of miss absent for this particular vote.
Okay.
Same for Hunter.
The motion carries. All righty. Item number 19.
Good, please.
Councilman Pusley.
It's, I don't know if the IT department can do something about this or whatever, but it's, it's very inconvenient that we can't see who voted for any particular item without turning around and looking up here, and which means I have to switch glasses to do that.
Does it not pop up on the screen?
Yeah, Councilman, we'll have to show you on the touchscreen. You can, you have to hit the right button. We'll get somebody to help you on it.
All right.
Yeah, we'll get, no problem. We'll get somebody over there right now.
Can you go tell Kevin to come back?
No, we'll help you out. No worries. We're not little kids, so we can't, this stuff's hard to figure out, you know?
Rebecca, are we able to include Councilman Roy's vote?
If the council is okay with that, I guess I'll be happy to include it.
We're fine, yeah. Okay, Councilman Hernandez.
I was going to wait for the next item to speak on, so I'll wait until.
Oh, that's for the next one?
Yes.
No problem. Okay, item number 19 is a zoning case number ZN 8281, an ordinance rezoning a property at or near 6004 Yorktown.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The case before you is to rezone the property located at 6004 Yorktown Boulevard from RS6, Single Family 6th District, to CN2 Neighborhood Commercial District. The subject property is 1.8 acres in size, and it is not platted. The applicants are the Amanis. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow for a retail center at that location. The property is part of the South Side Area Development Plan, and that area development plan and a future land use map calls for commercial development. To the north of the subject property are lots zoned RS6. To the south, across Yorktown are lots zoned RS6. To the east of the subject property is a lot zoned CG2. And to the west is an industrial lot zoned IL, Light Industrial. 23 notices were mailed out within a 200-foot notification area. Zero were returned in opposition. Zero were returned in favor. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the area development plan, and a future land use map, which calls for commercial development. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the neighboring properties along Yorktown and with the general character of the surrounding area. The planning commission and staff recommends approval, and I stand by for any questions.
Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, and Al, I know we, you know, we've kind of discussed these things before. And I understand the CN2, not CG, it's not a CG zoning. Therefore, there shouldn't be any bars in this particular.
Correct.
Right, so when we have the CG, CG2 or CG1, we require them to have a masonry wall in order to ensure there's no sound that travels over into the neighborhoods and the homes behind it. And just to remind individuals on why that's the case, and while we've had this discussion, we had an issue with the Nest nightclub, which I'm sure Chief Markle is very familiar with, and the noise that it provides to the neighborhood, the neighbors behind it, because there's no sound barrier. And as well as a particular car wash that's just down the street from there that the, the sound coming out from the dryers are right next to the homes behind it. So I want to make sure that whatever we do here, we're not, we're not creating an issue for the residents that live behind this particular property.
Great question, a great comment. And as with any retail development, in this case, it's a CN zoning against a residential zoning. There is a separation of the wooden fence. But if there are services behind the development meeting, the retail center, and their dumpsters or maybe deliveries, then that need, instead of an eight-foot wooden wall, it would need to be a masonry wall. So that, that's, that, and of course, the distance helps buffer the sound. But as you know, with the car wash that we visited, sometimes it's difficult.
Okay, so just looking at it from the perspective, it's going to be based on the plat as to what kind of barriers you have between the residents behind them and that actual property?
Yes.
Okay, so.
But the zoning, but the zoning, the zoning dictates a type B buffer, which I was talking to you about, that gives the, that gives the distance of 10 feet, but also the separation of eight feet with a wooden fence. But if there are services behind this, you know, like with any development, if they, if they take deliveries in the back, if there's dumpsters in the back, anything that creates noise in the back, then that needs to be an eight-foot masonry wall. And, you know, that's, it's done, well, the CN zoning is done to help protect the quiet enjoyment of the people around. And I think that works, right? For this particular location, because it's not like a club or anything like we discuss.
The adjacent property is built the masonry wall for both, all the way to the corner of that intersection with, I want to say it's.
You're talking the car wash?
No, no, there's, the two property, we just recently zoned that. No, no, there's, the two property, we just recently zoned that intersection of Annamassie and Yorktown. And we asked them to build the masonry wall and they built it.
Right.
Again, we're not going to see the plat when it comes to us, so you can understand what's actually going to be done behind the building. So, I'll, you know, in this case.
We'll connect the dots, yes.
Okay, since it's CN1, I'm not going to, you know, request that they do it on this, on this particular zoning, but I'll leave it to your judgment and when it goes to plat, that they, that that's, you know, that you take into consideration the residents that live behind this property.
We'll connect the dots. Thanks.
Okay. With that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number 19? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment. And please submit your vote. The motion carries. Item number 20 is an ordinance approving the Corpus Christi Crime Control and Prevention District budget for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I will open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number 20? Okay, there being no one, we'll, oh, you are, I'm sorry, Mariah Boone, come right on up, right on up, thank you.
Hi, I'm Mariah Boone, 710 Pondhurst Street, District 2. I serve on the Crime Control and Prevention District Board. I voted no on this budget, because once again, it does not include any evidence-based crime prevention. And the voters who voted on the district originally, voted for it to include both crime control projects, like it is funding, and crime prevention district projects, which it no longer is. Every time we have a board meeting, we get a crime report from the police department. They do a very good job reporting on all of the different crime that's happening in our community, which is considerable. And usually, it includes a great deal of youth crime. I brought the board information, data about functional family therapy, which is considered to be the most effective evidence-based crime prevention modality by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention in the U.S. Department of Justice. The board voted, as they did last year, to then not hear any more about crime prevention, because they want to fund police only. I also want the police department to be very well-funded and I'm very, I think we do a very good job in the Crime Control Board of looking at that crime control side of things. But there will never be a way to hire enough police officers if, to actually address the crime needs in our community, if we do not also fund evidence-based crime prevention. And that is why I voted no, because I believe that the way that the voters voted on this district to include both crime control and crime prevention is the way that we should budget it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. Is there anyone else that would like to make public, oh, yeah, go ahead and come on down and then we'll ask questions.
My name is Tracy Teague. I reside at 2801 Chapelview Drive in Corpus Christi. I too serve on that board. And I voted for the budget, because I feel like until we are fully funded with our police department, we are currently short officers, until we get to the level that we need to be, we do not need to be diverting funds to other places. Also, crime prevention is built into our police department model, with community policing, with a lot of the community and volunteer work that our officers do. We believe they are in the community, building a rapport with the community. And so, there is a level of crime control prevention built into our model. So, while I'm not opposed to outside programs, I believe until we have our department where it needs to be, we should not be diverting those funds.
Thank you, Ms. Teague. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on item 20? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public hearing. Chief Markle, so, we've actually had this conversation before. And one of my concerns was, why not, or your concerns, you know, where is she? Back there. Yeah, the prevention side of it, right? But then there's also, you had advised me that we cannot take that piece out of the title, because I know initially, and I'll let you give us the history, this was for, or maybe I'm wrong, maybe initially it was for both. And that's how it all became. And then we scaled it down because of funding, I do recall that. And then I think I asked you, well, why don't we take it, so there's no confusion, take that piece out? But I think legislatively, you, we cannot.
It's a legislative description. Mike Markle, Police Department.
Yeah, give us a little bit of background, because it's concerning that we are making certain that we are abiding, right, by the title.
Legislatively, it allows you to hire police officers or run programs, crime prevention programs. I won't disagree with Ms. Boone. She started a wonderful program many years ago, was impactful. We have absorbed most of those programs. The particular program that she came up with has since been, it's not against the law anymore, truancy, and all those laws have changed. I don't, I'm not anti-program. What happened was, and most of you were here for it, a few years ago, we made a collective decision to grow the police department with this fund. As a matter of fact, we knew it was going to grow above the revenue generating ability of it and we're going to dip into fund balance for a few years. That was city manager's plan. And in fiscal year 27, we'll start drawing down. We'll move seven over into general fund officers and then next year, eight over into those officers, 26 and 27. And then we will start seeing a surplus in revenue again. And then we can start talking or having conversations about meaningful programs. That's been the plan. So, it's not that the board is turning a deaf ear to programs, it's that nobody is doing something to be antagonistic, it's just part of the plan that we've chosen to stick to. So, the title, yes, the title is legislatively bound, Crime Control and Prevention District. There are certain rules that go with that. You can have programs, you cannot have programs.
So, it's not absolutely required?
It's not absolutely required. It is, it is part of the program. It is part of the options within the Crime Control and Prevention District.
Right. Okay, let me get some of my colleagues on here. Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you know, this is, you know, we added 15 officers using this kind of deficit spending for this particular one and they're doing it again this year. And I see your plan of going seven the following year and then getting it over to the general fund, but this is probably the last year you'd probably do that.
One more year to do that and then we'll be moving in the other direction. And fund balance will start to grow again, you'll have better options.
Right. You also have an item in here for 100,000. Can you explain what that's for, reserve appropriation?
Reserve appropriation, that's, it's exactly that. It's a reserve appropriation in case insurance costs or something goes up for need.
Is that, is that really necessary? Couldn't the board just vote on that as necessary?
They could, they could. And it's been utilized elsewhere in the past. So, yeah, yes, you can, Councilman, that's the short answer.
I mean, because technically, it's sitting there and you may not use it, right?
But remember, all your, all your crime control funds fall back into fund balance when they're not used. It's a little different than the general fund, so.
Right, right. I just.
And to change it now, Crime Control Board vote is an up or down vote. So, either you approve the budget as it stands or you send it back to the board to redo it and then come back to you.
Right, now, just, you know, just asking some questions.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
The aspect of it. Okay, I mean, you've got a plan.
We have a plan. We've been trying to stick to the plan. I understand the angst for folks who want programs. I'm not anti-program, absolutely not. But we want to succeed in the growth of this police department. I stand by what I've said for years, is that your best crime deterrent is a marked unit with a uniformed officer in it, in your neighborhood, making patrols and discouraging bad behavior. That's, I believe that. We've been under the mark for years. The city management, this council and mayor has done tremendous work to grow our police department. And I think we stick to that, stick to our plan.
Thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
So, Chief, are there opportunities for you, and maybe you've done this in the past, there are a number of nonprofit organizations here in this community and some of them get involved in some of the things that crime prevention or could allude to crime prevention. And have you worked with any of those groups or? All the time. CCPAL brings together our industry partners, our local partners. They service 3,000 children through sports and athletics and it's an interaction with police. It's preventing idle time in summer times, it's those things that give youth direction, mentorship. We have our Explorer Program, which is a chapter of the Boy Scouts, back-to-school events. We have, we have programs throughout the year that interact with literally thousands of our community's children. And it all brings together, the Saturday's event brought 140 different businesses together from the city to service and provide for our city's youth. I sort of knew the answer to that question before I asked it, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to respond. I think, you know, and like you, I'm not opposed to programs that, whatever we can do to prevent crime, but I think the task that we focused on here the last few years is growing the police force and getting up to, closer to what this city should have in the number of uniformed officers working the street on a daily basis. We're not there yet, we've got a ways to go, but, and I'll just say in final analysis here, I'm extremely proud to support this budget and support what you're doing and what the Crime Control Prevention District is doing for this community. So, thank you very much. Appreciate that, thank you.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I guess I won't belabor the point since Pusley stole all the thunder. But Chief, I guess, I mean, I think you put it best, Pusley put it best, more officers means more prevention. Where is, I guess I'm confused about some of the concerns that have been brought to us on this item, which is suggesting that having more officers does not cause, what am I trying to say here? More officers does not prevent more crimes, or that's what others have brought to our attention. Do we have anything, any evidence of that, any statistics that adding a new officer does not prevent more crime?
I think more officers, better saturation does prevent crime. I would not ever say that programs don't help. There's lots of study that will show you that education, poverty rates, interaction, right, services to children can change their life moving forward. I think that's what Ms. Boone is talking about.
Got you.
This is simply just a choice that we made.
Sure, so I think.
The department first.
It might be great for us, because we have had people reach out to us, saying that more officers does not necessarily prevent crime.
I don't agree with that, but.
I don't either. And I think that it, I think every, we could use every officer we can get, as the council member said. So, if, I mean, outside of the obvious, maybe we do need some statistics to hand out, I don't know. But it should be an obvious saying, we are still about 100 officers short. I think every single one counts. So, thank you for what you do, we really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, thanks, Chief. So, I was thinking about some of the comments that Ms. Boone raised, some of these prevention programs. I don't know, has your department explored any grant opportunities, federal or state grant opportunities to fund these kinds of programs?
We pursue about $2.5 million worth of grants a year and a lot of those grants have crime prevention.
Sewn in.
Pieces within them, they're sewn in. And we have a crime prevention unit that was funded by Crime Control, we've absorbed that. So, most of the programs, your DPO program, your crime prevention program, your graffiti program, all those things that were in the original vote in 97 or 96 for the original crime control, we've kept those, we've absorbed those within the police department. They've not gone away.
So, this has come up, I guess, with some of the other city departments as well. Are you aware, is your department aware of grant opportunities that we're maybe perhaps missing out on, because we are not applying for them?
Well, again, we apply for, I think most will attest, for any grant we can get our hands on and that's approved by this council. Certainly, if you're familiar with some that you would like us to investigate or to explore further, we're very happy to do that.
So, I just want to be clear about this. So, to your knowledge, anyway, you're exploring, you're exhausting the grant opportunities available?
We continuously look for grants.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a comment that Councilman Hunter alluded to or mentioned, which is, how do we determine that the police department is actually doing like, you know, a good job, better job? I mean, how do you rate yourselves? Like, how do you, is it response time? Is it crime? Is it lowering crime? I mean, how do, what are the factors that you use to say, you know what, you know, getting 100 more officers or 10, whatever the, whatever that is, how do you say, you know what, it's working? How do you?
It's public sentiment, it is response time, it is increased call load and maintaining a static crime numbers like we've done. We've, our numbers have been up and down in the single digits, 2%, 3%. Right now, overall crime is about flat, when other cities are flying out. Our call load is, our primary call load has gone over 600,000 calls into the call center. You'll see that police-only crime load has gone up 25% over the last five years and we've maintained a constant crime, crime level. Now, anecdotally, we, there's probably a shift, which there is nationwide, to some more juveniles committing those same number of crimes, which we're working on with different partners, federal agencies, you know, county agencies. But overall, the measurement of crime is how you feel going outside and how, how we're responding to you and our interaction with the public.
I mean, I know personally, we have a good relationship. Whenever I have one of, any constituent calling me and they're, they're experiencing some crime around their neighborhoods or what have you, you, I mean, automatically, I can, I can say this, that you will do your best to address that issue right away. But not everybody has that, that, you know, relationship, right? That they're going to call me and then I'm going to call you directly and it's going to happen. I have also heard of people saying, and I'm mentioning this now, because I think you've heard it too, is that, you know, we have all these officers and I call them and it takes X amount of time. So, you know, just earlier, and I don't want to compare, you know, oranges to apples, but, you know, just earlier, we had the police, the fire department respond in four minutes, you know, I know that, I'm asking for the moon here, but.
Has absolutely apples and oranges.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. But, you know, to hear that was just reassuring, you know, to, but it would be wonderful if we, because that is a complaint that I hear.
Sure, sure.
That the police just don't come fast enough, I don't know how many calls I have to make, or I don't know what I have to say. But anyway, it'd be nice to at least hear a little bit more what we can do to, to speed up those calls.
Appreciate that. Couple things on what you said. One is our calls are triaged, right? So, by order of severity, from, ranking from zero to nine. So, your zero and one, high priority calls, were there very, very quickly. Of course, some report calls and thefts and maybe traffic accidents, they do take a while sometimes. Depends on the time of the day, day of the week, understand that. You could have 1,000 officers and that dynamic won't change. There are busy times and there are slow times in every, in every city. Second, you all are very special, but it's not a concierge service just for you. We are ubiquitous in our contacts from citizens. I have citizens that none of you know, right, that have no prominence. They call me, call my office, call my officers, and they get the same service, Ms. Campos. If they have an issue, our goal is to address that issue. And the reason that we can address that issue is because we have more officers now to do so. Because a lot of issues are solved with quality of life, right? Interventions, whether it be neighborhood disputes or working with our code officers, working with dilapidated buildings or building standard boards. There's a lot of things that mitigate crime that we make ourselves available to.
Really?
And that's because we have the staff or we're growing the staff and are able to do so.
Thank you for clarifying that. You're right, it's not just me. But, but thank you for clarifying that. And, and we do appreciate, you know, everything that, that your officers and you do. you know, everything that, that your officers and you do in our community. I mean, you're right, we do feel, you know, safer, but I think there's other ways that we can do, again, you know, like you know and we all know, to, to prevent crime. I would like to hear a little bit more, but, you know, I guess this is not the time, place. Hopefully we'll have those conversations soon.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Councilman Roy.
Chief, thank you for your insight. You know, recently, Councilmember Mike Pusley and myself met with you and the Downtown Management District, Alyssa, at your office. And in that conversation, we were looking at what, well, the question was asked, where are we at in terms of crime comparing it with prior years? I don't know where you got the information from, but you had it like in 20 seconds, I don't know if you pulled it out of your back, your back pocket or what you did.
Yeah, we track it.
But you shared that information with us, and so, two things, that was reassuring that you knew, you had access to that, which tells me that you're looking at that on a constant basis. And the other thing is, is that we talked a lot about what's going on, you know, related to downtown and some of the other areas, and the systemic problem that we have, I think, is more than just police officers, because when the police officers do their job, then we take it and we have to then worry about, okay, do you release those individuals without any repercussions? You know, they did something wrong because maybe, I don't know, our jails are tight in terms of the number of people there, are there certain crimes that they're just not prosecuting right now? All of those things play into the community and affect our community. So I know it's a tough job, it's a tough job, but we also talked about the fact that where we release our, our people when they get released, and I know we're looking at an alternative area for that. So there's a lot of moving parts and I thank you. I mean, I think we're so fortunate. It's kind of like the same thing, when I hear people constantly talk about streets, you know, they say, oh, our streets are this, our streets are that, but then recently I had the opportunity to travel and go to another city and I said, I think our streets are better than this, you know? As I bottom out in my car, you know, going down the street. So again, I thank you on that, and, you know, I think the city as a whole, this council as a whole, is doing all the things that we can do, and, and our attitude toward police officers, I've been to some cities recently that have defunded the police and now they're coming back and they're saying, we got a real problem, and so...
We don't suffer that here, that's for sure.
Yeah, we don't, and I think we're so fortunate, so I want to knock on wood that we continue and I support you and thank what your department does and the city.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'll provide a little anecdote, if you don't mind, is that we sent 11 officers to Houston to help them during their critical incident recently, and Larry Satterwhite is the chief up there, and we were talking on the phone and shooting, you know, and he says, well, I'm gonna steal those officers from you. That's what he goes, and they ran back to Corpus Christi.
Yeah.
They couldn't wait to get back to Corpus Christi.
And their units.
And that's not a testament to me, it's because of this community.
Right.
They said they could not believe the environment that those officers have to work in. And they were, they were very appreciative of all of you and this community especially and the environment that they have. It's unknown to a lot of police departments. We probably take it for granted, but I assure you, it's not the environment elsewhere.
Well, thank you, thank you for pointing that out, and I think we all agree on that, and it's just been the culture of this city for, for many, many, or almost, I would say almost a decade now. But that said, Chief Markle, and then we'll move on, I really do appreciate Ms. Boone's comments, and I understand where it's coming from.
As do I.
You know, we've had this conversation before, but maybe sharing it with the council, if you can give us, maybe those programs, certainly you look at your stats and you say, this is, this crime is up, this crime, and in this, you know, whether it be juveniles, kids, you know, what, middle-aged men or women, you've got all those stats, right? So prevention is trying to bring that down, right, proactively trying to stop that from happening, and I think that's where maybe Ms. Boone's coming from. We live in a different age, and as we move forward, things get worse when it comes to crime, when it comes to, you know, all the bad gets worse, and that, that's unfortunate, and we can only do what we can do with our resources. We have made a decision on this council many years ago, eight to be exact, that manpower is where we're going to invest because of the things you mentioned today. But what programs, and you don't have to answer this now, but if you can send this to us, this would be great, because I'm interested in, when you look at your stats to say, as Ms. Compos was saying, how do you measure your department? How does Chief Markle say, we're doing great in this area, but you know what, we gotta work a little bit over here? Because there's no way that we're, you know, wonderful across the board. It's a constant moving target. So what does Chief Markle look at to say, okay, we're measuring great here, but not here, and then what do we do about the areas? Maybe there are thefts, right? Maybe there are car break-ins, that was happening, right, in my neighborhood for a while, everybody's getting broken into for some reason, it was just, it was kind of rampant.
Well, there's a specific reason for that, yeah.
So then what programs, because we don't necessarily have them all, what do you look at to say, let's work closely, a little closer with them, because this organization focuses on whatever?
Yeah, that's why Councilman Roy brought that up, we are a data-driven agency. We know all the nuances of what's going on and who and what age they are and where they're at.
But that would be very good information for us to know, so that if somebody tells me, hey, Paulette, you're not, the crime, and I appreciate it, Ms. Boone, she's saying, well, we're not, we're not honoring the prevention side of it, I need to be able to say, maybe not within this because it is optional, however, we're, we look at these different, we work with these different organizations, and that would change, right, depending on where we are and the stats.
No, no doubt. But I do believe that Ms. Boone is speaking of something, I don't want to speak for her, but she's speaking of a program outside the Police Department, prior to police, facilitated by non-police, right, social interaction programs, right, youth programs not facilitated by the Police Department, funded by Crime Control.
Right, I know.
So those are things, a little different than what I do when I, when I pull my numbers, I extrapolate what's going, what's going on through those numbers and we address those issues.
But at the end of the day, I think we would all agree that it's about prevention.
Sure.
Right? Regardless of who pays for it, where it comes from, you're gonna work with people, just like the city does. We can't do the work of the Red Cross or, or, you know, all the different Salvation Army, we partner with them. So my curiosity is, show us, you know, here are the groups we work with because we have to address these issues and we can't do it all, right, under, under our umbrella. That would be very helpful for us, educational as well.
Okay.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you, Chief Markle, thank you for all the information today. So I believe we have a, we have a motion, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna play broken record here for a minute, and Mayor, say this again, and Peter, you know, the programs that the chief mentioned a while ago is another example of the things that we do in this city that do not get any advertisement. The C.C. Powell program by itself is a tremendous program that targets at-risk youth, that the officers have a fundraiser every year, that the Berry family allows us to use their ranch to raise the money for that program, and Valero helps sponsor it, and all the great things that that program does, and we don't tell a soul about it. And I think that's just, that is a crime in itself, that we are not doing a better job, and that's just one example of one program that they do. And so those are things that we need, this city needs to do, and I'm gonna keep saying it till December 10th, my very last meeting.
Yes, and Peter, I think that's easy enough to, you know, every good news item that way gets put out in multiple ways, you know, through our communications department. Okay, I'm gonna open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number 20?
You opened and closed it, Mayor.
Did I already open and close it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, please submit your vote. Okay, the motion carries. And our last item before we go into lunch, and here are two executive session items, is item number 21, and that is a motion authorizing execution of a one-year professional services contract with roadway asset services for pavement condition evaluation surveys. Survey.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Ernesto Delgarza, Director of Public Works. Joining me today via WebEx for this briefing is Scott Gordon, President of Roadway Asset Services. As part of the fiscal year 2024 budget, City Council approved a budget initiative to conduct a citywide pavement condition assessment and right-of-way assessment inventory. Today's motion will approve execution of a one-year professional services contract with roadway asset services. For background, in 2019, PCI data was collected by TransMap. 20% of the network was scored to obtain the city's PCI scores. The 2019 data was used to develop the 2021, 2025 IMP plan. In 2022, roadway asset systems collected PCI data of 100% of the city's network to develop the 2024 to 2028 IMP. The data for this contract will be collected in 2025 and will be used to develop the planned years for 2029 through 2031 rapid pavement program. Here's some historical PCI scores. The graph on this slide represents the PCI scores over the past five years. From 2019 to the present, the national standard PCI score is 70, so since 2019, the PCI has increased a total of 12 points. Currently, we're tracking an overall citywide PCI score of 69. We are tracking a PCI of 76 by 2026, so that was with our current planned roads on the rapid pavement program, we're looking to get that up to, I'm sorry, up to 76 at the end of 2028 plan year. So currently, the five-year plan extends to 2028, and at the completion of 2028, we were, we're projecting a PCI score of 76 with our current plan. The city's first contracted PCI assessments in 2015, prior to that PCI was collected manually by Street Operations Department. This methodology required the use of two full-time staff to inspect over a period of three years to collect the city's entire 1,234 central line network, so this is the new automated system that we're using to collect our data. The project's scope, a survey and assessment of 1,256 central line miles, a PCI score calculation for all of the network, inventory of additional assets within the city right-of-way, for example, guard row, bike lane, street illumination. These additional pieces of data will be acquired at the same time that the pavement condition survey is performed and will be incorporated into the city's various software systems, for example, the GIS and also Cartograph that we purchased earlier to assist with our planning efforts. The project is estimated to last eight months, beginning in October of 2024, and with PCI data collection and assessment completed by May of 2025, this data will then be used to plan for fiscal year 2029 and beyond. I stand by for any questions.
Councilman Hunter.
Rebecca, can you please put the timer up? How, with the RPP, how many lane miles can you do with a million dollars?
A million dollars will get you a mile in the residential program.
Okay. So you need to go hire someone from Austin, Texas to tell you which streets in this city need to be done? And Ernie, let me tell you something, you're doing a great job when it comes out there and knocking them out, but your presentations are contradicting themselves.
Right.
Six years, 12 years, whatever it's gonna take to reach these numbers, and now we're gonna reach 71 next year. Anyways, I think you're doing great when you, when yours teams are out there working on the streets, y'all are doing a great job. I don't think you need anybody to tell you which streets to do or to pump y'all up to say you're doing a good job. Just go do the streets. A million dollars gets us one lane mile, that's all we need to be focusing on.
Okay, this is not to pump y'all up, as was just mentioned. Tell us the, I mean, you just mentioned the scope of this, but the true need for this, and I respect your opinion, Councilman Hunter, but truly, you wouldn't be bringing this item to the table if it wasn't something you absolutely needed, or...
Right, yeah, so the intent is to gather data for the asset, in addition to that, provide pavement condition index scores, which, when we put them in a plan and we make a decision to put one road in front of the other.
Right.
It's defendable, and so when I go to a resident, they say, why isn't my road getting worked on? And mine's much worse than that one. When you're looking at 1,200 central line miles, this is a defendable metric to use in that scenario, and it's done like this in the city, it's done like this at Tech dot, we got scores every year when I was at Tech dot, for 9,000 central line miles, the cost was up there as well, but it's a standard industry practice. You know, you could use holistic methods to come up with prioritization, because all roads are bad and working on one is just as good as working on the other, and I do, you know, see that point, but when we're having to defend a plan and have equity across five districts and making decisions on, you know, which miles get done first, second, third, so on and so forth, this is the defendable process.
Mr. Delgarza, if you did not use this process, you would essentially be, you would be...
Picking roads.
Picking the roads.
Correct.
So you'd have nine people up here yelling at you, saying, how did you choose this road over that road?
That's correct.
Okay. Councilman Pusley.
Okay, Ernie, first off, I agree with Councilman Hunter, y'all, you're doing a great job and we're very lucky to have you, and we're seeing great things out of our Public Works Department, but I'm a little confused about this as well. So in 2021, we did this project where we hired a company to go and evaluate all the streets in Corpus Christi, is that correct?
Yes, sir, so that's, that's what I understood to be, the pass company that was used, and they only used or collected 20% sample, so if you had a mile-long roadway, they only scored 20% of that mile.
So, and maybe I dreamed this, but I was, Peter, I thought we were told that the last time we had this done, they did 100% of the roads in this city.
That was...
Yeah, the, Ernie, can you put the slide back up? The last time we did do 100%, this is with this company here that Ernie's recommending again today.
They did 100% of the streets in Corpus, and that was in 20...
2022.
2022, 100% sample.
Yes, sir, right.
Okay.
In the past, they only did a sample size, and it was a different company.
Okay.
The one that they selected the last time through a competitive process is the one that other big cities use, they have a real good reputation in the state, I'm not sure if Tech dot uses them, but they interviewed well, they scored well, and we're recommending them today again.
Okay, and I'm not questioning the company.
Yeah, no, I just want to point that out, though, it's a broken company.
Here's, here's my dilemma. Let's say XYZ Street in Corpus Christi in 2022 scored four, which is, it's graded one to five, is that correct?
Zero to 100, sir.
Or zero to, okay.
Yes, sir.
Whatever. So zero is being a really bad road and 100 is a really good road.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If it scored 20 in 2022, do we think it got any better?
No, sir, they're all, they're all depreciating at different rates because they all have different born-on dates.
So that's my point, Ernie, why, why are we redoing this when we have data that's only two years old, not quite two years old, and we're gonna spend a million dollars to go get the same information we got less than two years ago? Those, the streets, you know, you fix some streets, so the PCI index on those obviously are gonna be higher, and that's a good thing, but I would think we would want to wait till we get further down the road on what you're doing with this rapid pavement program, and maybe in another year or two, come back and do this sample to see where we are at that point. But I'm, I'm having a real problem with spending a million dollars to get the same information we just got less than a year and a half ago.
Right.
Because... Because I guarantee you, the streets that scored low haven't gotten any better.
Right.
And.
And, and I know you don't, I don't know if you have attachment being in front of you. A lot of that cost is from getting assets, the right-of-way assets, which we only have to do, you know, once every five years. The pavement condition score data itself can reduce the cost drastically, but we needed to obtain an inventory of all the right-of-way, this one go-around, because it's never been done, you know, for public work. So if I need to come and develop a striping plan in the future, if I need to develop a signing plan, if I need to develop a.
But you can't use the data you collected two years ago from?
It wasn't complete. This is, this is my first at bat here with the city of Corpus Christi to develop the scope for this contract. And so I'm developing the scope for the program that I'm trying to build for the city, and that's what this scope has.
So do they, if, if you wanted to collect that information, is it done in a different method than?
No, sir. It's, it's all done, let me give you the slide here. It's done using this, this, this van here. And so this van collects all the raw data, and then the company takes that raw data, uses their special software, and puts it into form, or I could use it into Cartograph. And also remind this council that you all approved the budget initiative for this very contract in 2024 budget, which we spoke to and y'all approved.
Well, I do, I realize that, but, you know, it's, it's been a while since we approved that budget, and things are changing rapidly.
Right.
But I, I don't know. I just, I have a real issue with redoing something we just did, just because we think we need to do it, and we're going to spend a million dollars to do it.
Right. And, and again, the million dollars is for this full-blown right-of-way inventory and the road data collection. The next go-around is part of the budget initiative. When we do this again, it's only going to be the road data collection. I can get you the cheaper price tag on that, which is not going to be.
So my question was, if you're just doing the right-of-way inventory, is that cheaper than doing the whole road?
No, this includes both the road data collection and the right-of-way.
No, no, I understand that. But if you just told this company, look, we just want to do the right-of-way this time because we don't have that information.
Right.
Would, would the price be cheaper?
I'd have to calculate, but again, we need the data. My recommendation to councils to get the data for both the right-of-way and the pavement condition.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Campus.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so on the, the million dollars that we're voting on right now, since we went to the rapid pavement process, we don't have, we don't have the PCI on the rest of these that you, that you have, the street, the right-of-way, the curb and gutter and driveway, the pavement markings, all that, right? We don't have.
It's not, it's not PCI, it's, it's an inventory.
It's an inventory.
It's not a score. This is just an inventory, our right-of-way, in addition to getting the scores for the road as well.
Okay. Because, I mean, I, I see one of the things that I am interested in, which is the sidewalks, right? It includes sidewalks. So what, how, what would that entail? This PCI, this million dollars, how would that affect sidewalks?
So sidewalk inventory, you're looking about $90,000 for 24, 49 units of pretty much them going out there and getting that data. And if you recall, the data that I have is data before. We've annexed a lot of the properties in London, and then also locations, you know, where we have new development. And so none of that data is in there. And if I'm going to have to make a plan to represent, you know, those areas, I won't have that data. We also, you know, have a lot of calls for, you know, bicycle facilities and stuff like that. I have no inventory. I know we spoke to the NPO, they were supposed to do a complete streets inventory. We never saw that. Here, you know, with our system, we can get them to give us exactly where all the bike lanes are and are not, in addition to the ADA ramps. Because behind the scenes, y'all see a rapid pavement program, y'all see the, the PowerPoints of what we do every week. But there's also a compliance effort that we're meeting at Public Works, work with Engineering Services. And if we don't have that information, we cannot be compliant with our rapid pavement program because we have to bring those ADA facilities up to standard.
Well, try to help me understand. When I was asking about the sidewalks, it was brought to my attention that that would cost us, for us to do the inventory.
Right.
Didn't you say it was going to be?
No, this is an inventory, not a score.
Okay.
So they, they were going to tell us what we have, how much of it, and then put it in a form, or we can put it into Cartograph and have it GIS-based, map-based, and then we can, we can manipulate it as, as needed. But it doesn't tell you what's 100 score, what's a zero score, so that we can go prioritize. That's the expensive part.
Okay. One other question that I have is, you know, I've had these conversations with you, and I say, I swear, it's got to be District Two that's got the worst streets, but you're, you know, you're like, ah, I wouldn't be too sure about that. But on your, your PCI scores, I know that you divide it by, by districts, but do you have it to where it's just all in the citywide, so that it's, we don't care what district it's on, but just can we figure out, like, what are the worst streets? And I think I've mentioned that to you.
Right, right.
Why not get to the worst instead of doing it by districts, you know?
Yeah. And, and quite honestly, you know, if we were running that exercise, you would see that Flower Bluff, you know, some locations in Flower Bluff, you know, if you talk about the dog parks, you know, there's, there's always going to be clusters of areas in Corpus Christi where you have older development compared to brand-new development. So I think you would see red in a lot of places. And I've shown, I believe I've shown you all the map before, but it's all, it's all blood red, you know, when you show all of the map across Corpus Christi. So we are making strides, the, in my opinion, and based on the data, the rapid pavement program is being very successful. Contractors are getting a lot done in a short amount of time. So I think this data will help us, you know, to continue that success.
No, and I do see it. I mean, I, I mean, from one day, actually, from, literally, from one day to the next, I'm like, oh, my God, they got this done, you know, so quickly. But I'm just, was making sure that, that sidewalks, since we are on this rapid pavement, that we definitely, you know, include sidewalks and, and all these other things. I mean, I know for sure that's, that's my number-one complaint as far as, in my district. My district is, is mainly sidewalks and, of course, the residential streets. So anyway, I, I thank you, and I thank your team for doing a great job, and let's see if we can make this even better.
Thank you.
Councilman Herny, this.
Okay, Ernie, on, on this one, I was reading the agreement, and it specifically says that for those segments in the right-of-way, the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, guardrails, and I believe striping, it'll give you a physical condition numerical to whether it's good, fair, or poor.
Right.
So there is going to be some rating associated with it, is that correct?
Right. And, and that's what I've seen when they gave us the curb and gutter data. But, you know, if you get, if you have 8 million linear feet of curb and gutter, and, and say you have 50% of that showing fours and fives, or twos and threes, there's no real, real way to prioritize that.
Well, it says it's only going to give you the three.
Right.
Good, fair, and poor.
Right. And, and we'll use that information, but we won't, we won't go to the bank with that information. I need to know what my inventory is. Public Works is responsible for the right-of-way, so we're managing right, right-of-way line to left, right-of-way line, all the assets. So we have a lot of, say, for example, metal bean guard fence that you would drive past that is damaged with a cone in front of it. I have no budget or program for those systems. So they've been hit, they're not protected, I have to get, find a way. So usually what we do is we get into our budget streams, try to find available monies, and then get a contract to get those replaced. But it's not like the rapid pavement program where I have a program actively going out there and replacing metal bean guard fence that's been, you know, hit by vehicles, and, or you'll have some that's fallen apart or rusted. And so while we are running our current programs, I'm, you know, as the Director of Public Works, I'm starting to inventory and put together other needs and programs, whether we have budget for them or not. That way, I at least have it on the launch pad that in the event that you see it as a priority, get me the funding for it. I have priorities ready to go.
Okay, I understand what you mean by that. I have, there's a guard rail there, that bridge that goes, that's near Sun Valley on Yorktown that gets hit often.
Right.
I'm sure, you know, I, I don't know if we have the, the ability or scope, maybe the police department can help us with this, is if a car hits it, we should be going after their insurance to pay for that guard rail.
Right.
Right? I don't think we do that currently.
Right, and it's very difficult to go and find those individuals.
Well, that's if, if there's a police report, we should be able to, right? But if they just hit and run, you know, but if they, if they physically damaged their vehicle and they're stuck there, and there's a police report, and we tow them their vehicle, we should be able to go get that funding.
Right.
We just have to go and do it. So I, I don't know if that would be us, that'd be the attorney's office, that'd be, there's got to be some priorities associated with that. Okay.
Right. And step one is having.
Step one is have something in place to do it.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Okay. And, you know, I, I understand, if this was just PCI, you know, I'd, I'd agree with Councilman Hunter and Councilman Pusley, that we probably could wait a little bit longer on that. But since you're doing an inventory on this, this makes a lot of sense. I don't have nearly the sidewalk issues that District Two and Three have, simply because it's just a newer, newer part of town, but I can understand it. And then there's some areas that just don't have sidewalks, period. You know, if you have, you have the open bar ditches, you're not going to have any. So I, I can understand where you're going with this and trying to get an inventory on it. That makes it, I'll agree with it. That being said, is this a, an extension to an existing contract, or is this a brand-new contract?
This is a brand-new contract.
Okay, because I, you know, I didn't see a matrix with evaluation from other companies. Can we explain kind of how that, you know, did we not do for an, or a bid? I mean, what was it?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Josh Cronly, Assistant Director for Finance and Procurement. When Ernie approached me on this need we had, what we really wanted here was to contract with the same firm that performed the last assessment for consistency. The, the roadway, the PCI scores, while the, the score itself is relatively objective, the means and method to be able to put together that score vary. As you can see, you had one firm that did it with only 20% of the roadway data. And in order for Ernie to get the best assessment for how successful his program has been, he wanted consistency. And because it does fall in line with a professional service contract, we are operating under the exemption. And since we did have them compete last year, and their pricing is relatively consistent with, with those lines, we felt comfortable bringing forward this exemption to City Council asking to enter in the contract.
If this was simply just the PCI, I would have, I would have agreed with you there. But this is more than that. This is also the inventory of all the right-of-way that does not have that same consistency associated with it, right? So.
Yes, sir. You're, you're correct. And like I said, the, the PCI portion of the contract is, is the portion that, you know, is proprietary. You know, it was just asset, asset inventory, we would probably go out to another company and get them both ways, but they did it before, and then we can see any comparisons from before and after. If you recall, when we went on our drive, and you had mentioned that a street had a pavement condition score of a certain number, and then, and then it had no work done to it, then, and then we got the scores again, and then the score went up, but it had not received any work. This is specifically why we went to the same company. I feel comfortable getting two data points. After that, we have a trend, and then we can put it to competition because we've established a baseline. But because we had the, the anomalies with TransMap the first go-around, and then we got good data with Raz, and we call it good data, but we went through an extensive audit process with our engineers internally and working alongside Raz to clean up the TransMap discrepancies with the data that Raz collected so that it was an apples-with-apples comparison.
Well, there, there was challenges with it. I mean, when we went and visited those streets, if it had like a skin patch, it got a higher score.
Right.
Then, but the overall street was terrible.
Correct, correct.
Right? So it's, you know, and they gave it for the whole section of the street.
Right.
So even with this company, you have challenges.
Right. And, and to your point, if you get a brand-new vendor, and, and then you're looking at a whole new approach, because these individuals have proprietary software that goes from the van, raw data collection, and interpretation processing into Cartograph, you know, then we would, we would be in that situation.
I'm with you on the PCI. I'd just say, we probably did a stretch here to do this with the right-of-way evaluation. We probably should have actually bid that out, but.
Right.
That's, we're here now. All right. Thank you.
There's been four to five other studies, very similar to this, on the itemized issues. We have the NPO to help, that have helped us in the past. All I'm saying is, is if we had only done two of those studies, we would have four or five lane miles of streets done. But I do want to continue to echo, your team that's out in the field is good. Please keep up the good work. I think y'all should work on your presentations up here, though.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Barra.
First off, Ernie, I support this, but I just want to clarify some things that maybe... So explain to me the compliance perspective.
Yes, sir. So in, in the residential area, if you have, say, wheelchair ramps at the corners of a roadway.
Gotcha.
Anytime we go and mill an overlay, that's considered an improvement, and we had to vet this with legal Engineering Services. Also recommended that we brought everything up to, up to compliance because the city has been fined before for those kind of issues. So we made sure that moving forward, we would include that with our plan.
Okay. And just to remind me, when did you start as Public Works Director?
November 2022, sir.
November 2022. Seems like years already.
Yes, sir.
And doing a great job. We're happy to have you. Let's just say, for example, what, what would be the, what would be the, I mean, like I said, I support this, but I just want to, I just want to make sure that the rest of the council understands. What would be the consequence of this, of this item, what is it, failing?
Yeah, so we would have the 2022 data, which has depreciating values that we may or may not be consistent with when we come up with our new plan in 2029. You also have brand-new roads that have come on system, which we're not going to be able to account for from the previous data. So there aren't, anybody living off those roadways that, you know, either annexed or new developments are not going to get represented in our analysis.
Here, and, and hold on for a second. Now, my common sense, which is, I always say, common sense is relative, you know, especially when you're uneducated about the, about the subject. So, because I, I would argue sometimes my common sense is much lower than the rest of the average person.
Right.
Hey, you agree? Anyway. So I would say that if those are new developments, they're new streets, then what, what's the relevance of getting them done if it's a new, if it's a new street, if it's supposedly a new street?
Yeah, we have seen brand-new developments that the streets are actually failing.
Okay.
And it's, it's a, it's a fact that we're dealing with at Public Works, and we're working to resolve those issues on the development side.
And, you know, that's important. We, we went over that not too long ago about, obviously, the inspections of, of streets and new developments. So that's very good. So that way, you have an inventory of that as well. Okay, go on. I'm sorry.
Okay. So the big, the big part is that you, you don't want to go, you know, holistic with it. So if I don't have that data for all the new roadways, or for, I can't predict depreciation for 1,200 centerline roadways. I can't go and anticipate what, what's bad tomorrow if it was good today. You know, some roads go fast, some go slow. It's, it's impossible for me to predict without having the data. And, and I get the fact that, yes, the data is new, but I've seen, you know, using my Tech dot experience, I've seen, you know, examples during the energy sector activity where we lost a whole system in a month, you know, a whole county. Not that that's happening here, but we have seen roads get pretty bad in a short amount of time because either you have construction, development pops up out of nowhere, and then they start using that road as a haul road. We have no way to prevent, you know, construction traffic from going through residential streets
Yeah.
and tearing those roads up. So I've seen brand-new bond projects where even. -and tearing those roads up. So I've seen brand-new bond projects where, even driving with Councilman Hernandez, Inverness is an example, where, Iverness, yeah, it was, it was a brand-new street and then you started seeing some failures.
Yeah.
Me, too.
But again, you know, if, if, if you don't have that data, I can't prioritize. I can't prioritize and give that equity to the five districts.
Particularly with a long-term plan. And your plan extends how far out?
So it goes five years, it's a five-year plan, yes.
I just wanted to get that clear. So like I said, I support this. I just wanted, I just wanted there to be a clear understanding of the downside of not supporting it. And then I think also this assists with Councilmember Campus's desire to try and assist us with looking at the sidewalk issue.
Right.
Particularly with alleyways and all those things of which I know that we don't have funding in the budget for now, but that way, future councils now. And so how consistent, how often are we gonna, are you gonna require, or how, how often is it prudent to complete a study such as this?
All right, so my, my plan is to take this data, the, the right-of-way data should be good, you know, for a good five years. The pavement condition index data, I'm going to make that comparison from the data I received for this go-around and the previous one to see how they're depreciating, because that, again, that's how I'm going to make my assessment. And then, you know, the point has been taken. I understand that I can reduce costs, one with competition, but I had to start with a baseline and we didn't have that at Public Works.
Yeah.
And so this is establishing that baseline.
No, I, I understand. I understand completely. The continuity, the confidence that, you know, having consistent data, I mean, it happens, believe it or not, the same thing in our industry.
Right.
You know, in my industry, I should say. Okay, now, the other perspective is I, I think that I see that this is important. And once again, it's, we're talking on a common sense level here.
Yes, sir.
Is that then maybe are we able to determine, let's say, for example, you, you've indicated there, there are streets that are newly developed by new developers and that way, we can use that at one time as, as data to be able to determine, to be able to, to say, okay, this is what we're finding when we had talked about two years ago, having someone inspect the streets. So that way, they'd assist engineering and in addition, development services. I would think this would be also a useful tool for impact fees.
Yeah, correct. It, it does give you a sense of depreciation, you know, for the cycle that you've obtained the data, so you can use it that way.
Because right now, in impact fees, the recommendation that the committee made was zero cost for streets, of, which I, I hope we go back and look at, which I was hoping that we'd looked at a couple of weeks ago, but nonetheless, that's a different item. So, okay, so the bonuses are, once again, taking a complete inventory of, and then assess the depreciation, assess what's, make a decision on the pressure points with regard to depreciation, whether they be economic development, whether they be substandard development, whether they be the weather. We could go back and state that, you know, who knows? Hopefully we have a good rainy season sometime and that we can determine that, okay, that's, that's the impact that it has. So am I correct in assuming that in my common sense?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you very much, Ernie. Once again, I, I support this initiative. And with that, I move for approval.
Ernie, what, how many miles of streets did you say we have?
1,200, a little over 1,200, yes.
1,200, okay. So this is simply a tool. It's a tool that you need, that you're asking for, so that we can continue what we're trying to do, which is fix our streets overall.
That's correct.
Without the tool, you go holistic, so we got, go back into like caveman years, trying to figure out what streets we should be fixing. And that would fall on you, which I wouldn't want that job.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's essential. Thank you. Okay, so we have, we have a motion and we have a, did we have a second? Yes. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on item number 21? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public hearing. Please submit your votes. Okay, the motion carries. That was our last item. Actually, we have two executive session items. So at this time, we are going to go into executive session on items numbers 22 and 23, per Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074 and 551.087. We will return shortly.
Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. Councilman Pusley?
Mayor and council, I would like to make a motion to increase the city manager's base salary by a 5% performance-based increase, plus a 5% market-based increase. Authorize an increase in the severance payment from 12 months to 18 months of salary. Increase the maximum vacation hours that may be accrued at the end of each year and not lost from 240 hours to 500 hours. Require that the city manager take at least five consecutive business days of leave each year. And authorize the mayor to execute an amended employment agreement incorporating the aforementioned changes with the salary increase to be effective on May 20th of 2024, retroactively. That's the motion.
That's your motion. Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Please submit your vote.
I would have done 5%.
There you go. Okay, the motion carries. 5-4. Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.